Mike Slate, Susan's not here.
Welcome to the Board of Education's April 3, 2023 work session. Mr. Triplett will be doing our pledge of allegiance today, and I believe he will lead with the prayers. That right, Mr. Triplett as well?
Let's go ahead and stand. I just thought of in light of the events in Nashville this past week, rather than a traditional moment of silence, I'd like to just say a word of prayer. So let's pray. Father, we love you, and we are all brokenhearted at the loss of life at Covenant School in Nashville this past week. And Father, we're comforted by your words, which tells us in Psalms that you're near to the brokenhearted. And Father, we ask you to be near to these brokenhearted families and friends who have lost loved ones. We ask you to be near to these brokenhearted parents who have, this week, have had to bury their children. And we ask, Father, that you would provide the comfort that these families need, and that only you can provide. I pray for these students and these teachers who have witnessed something that no one should ever have to see and experience something no one should ever have to experience, that in all the emotion and worry and anxiety and fear, Father, that you would replace that fear with peace, you'd replace that anxiety and worry with hope and trust. I pray that as they begin the process in the days, weeks, months, and really even years ahead of coping with what they've had to be a part of, I pray, Father, they would not allow this to destroy them. I pray, Father, that even in their deepest and darkest days, they would know the love of a heavenly Father who cares, who's there and can help them rise up and walk through this valley. I pray that we would all find our hope in you and in the salvation offered through your Son, Jesus, and it's in his name we pray. Amen. Let's face the flag and pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Triplett. A few announcements. Ms. Horn will not be in attendance tonight due to business travel, and I believe Mr. McMillan is running late, but will be here a sec, correct? In addition to our regular monthly meetings, during April, the board will hold a called meeting on Thursday, April 27, at 5:00 PM to consider the annual budget, and that meeting will be held in this boardroom. Also, just a reminder tonight, I know we have a lot of people signed up for public forum and a lengthy agenda. I just want to remind everyone in attendance that this is the only opportunity that we as a board have to discuss issues that come before us as an elected body, and we're glad that you're here. But we do ask that we, you know, keep the noise down. If you want to need to say something or talk to your neighbor, please step outside to do so. Please refrain from cheering, clapping, booing, snapping, hissing. I don't know. What am I missing here? All those things because we do have a lengthy agenda. And just to set that expectation, if this does happen, you know, I will ask whoever's speaking to stop, and we will ask you to leave. So we really don't want to ask anybody to leave tonight. So if we can just all be respectful of that, and also, board members, if you will make sure to pull your microphone down and speak clearly into that as well, because I know, you know, it's difficult for us to hear when people are talking out there, but it's also sometimes difficult for people out there to hear us, especially if we're not speaking directly in our microphones. And so I do ask that you speak clearly in your microphones. So with all of that, are there any requested changes to this meeting agenda? Do we have a motion to approve? Some motion by Mr. Triplett, a second by Ms. Henderson. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Superintendent?
Whoops, there we go. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. I just want to start by saying it's been a very tough week, and thank you to the board and for Mr. Triplett for recognizing the events from Nashville earlier tonight. I would also like to begin on behalf of Knox County School staff in expressing our district's condolences to the Covenant School in Nashville. As I told our families, this event was shocking, and I know that it caused anxiety and concern in our community, especially our students who have suffered from these kinds of acts of violence or being involved in those before. I want to emphasize that safety is our district's top priority, and I consult regularly with our security chief, Jason Perryard, who does a great job, and even working with our other law enforcement agencies that are great partners of ours. From day one, I've charged our security department to work with our law enforcement partners to continuously monitor and enhance our safety plans that we have for Knox County schools. We will continue to be proactive in protecting our students and staff. While it was a tough week in Nashville, here at home, we also have been dealing with some significant issues of our own. I want to apologize for the length of tonight's update, but I have some serious topics that I want to up to date the board and also the families in public tonight. Under my leadership, Knox County Schools will not stop focusing on what students need. We are continuing, our students are counting on us to lead, and therefore, we will. With that said, I want to begin by addressing a situation that took place last week when a contracted employee intentionally left a gas valve open at Harden Valley Academy. I want to thank the Knox County Sheriff's Office for their quick response to the situation. I want to thank the staff at Harden Valley Academy for their work to safely evacuate the students from the building. And also, I want to announce tonight that with that in mind, I have asked our Assistant Superintendent of Business and Talent, Ms. Jennifer Himmelgarn, to conduct a formal review of the incident with two major areas of focus. Our first will be to look at the actions taken by the school and district leaders in response to this incident last Thursday, and also to review the protocols and procedures that are in place to address similar situations should they arise again. Ms. Himmelgarn will lead this interview and will have uninhibited access to any KCS personnel she needs to assist her in this process. At the conclusion of this review, it is my directive that we have concrete ways to improve school safety and protocols district-wide, and also, Ms. Himmelgarn will produce a report for the KCS Board of Education on that review as well. I also want to provide an update about our review of student success, practices, policies, and procedures, particularly those related to special education, response to intervention, 504, and ELL services and supports. We have conducted multiple surveys, and I want to provide some details about that process. The RTI, or Response to Intervention Survey, opened on March 21, and as of Friday, it received 389 responses from families who received those services, and we did, we also translated those into Spanish, so we've gotten some responses as well from families who speak that language. The Special Education and 504 Survey is currently open and has been shared with parents and guardians of all students currently identified for an IEP or a 504 plan. And the ELL survey is being translated into nine languages and will be shared with families opening on April 3. In addition, the Knox Education Foundation has secured the Ackerman Marketing and PR firm to facilitate a series of regional parent-focused groups in early May. We also intend to open an educator import portal in mid-April for special education teachers, teaching assistants, and principals of special day schools to share innovative and strategic ideas to help us better meet the needs of our unique students. I intend to appoint a special education task force in the coming weeks to process the inputs we receive and to make concrete, meaningful recommendations to improve our work in the special education space. This small working group will consist of parents and guardians of KCS students selected to represent a variety of special education perspectives. While I plan to ensure KCS educators have a voice at the table, my intent is not to include... include any district-level personnel or board members in that process. The task will be, the task force will be responsible for presenting their final recommendations to the board in a public meeting so the district, so district personnel can work with the board to act on the recommendations that were given. Finally, please know that as a superintendent, I'm committed to transparency and continuous improvement in all areas of our work. My hope is that we'll foster confidence among our stakeholders as we move forward with various challenges. And finally, I want to remind everyone that Friday, April 7th, and Monday, April 10th, are student holidays. We look forward to seeing students back in class on Tuesday, April 11th. Madam Chair, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Iswick. So next, we have our annual plan quarterly progress report. I'm sorry. Yes, Reverend Butler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have two, three questions, follow-up. For the custodian contract company, did we look at, is this something that may could be considered to be looked at in their screening process since this was a contract worker?
Madam Chair, thank you, Reverend Butler. So they go through the same screening process that we do for Knox County schools. I will say that they took swift action for that employee and any employee they have concerns with. They no longer work for Knox County schools, whether it's termination or they are reassigned to another organization. So I do know that they do have the same protocols and security screening.
Thank you. And also in that area, what is the status of the custodian worker shortage?
So currently, we have 100 vacancies.
And how does that relate to where we were? That more or less?
It's, well...
About the same?
It's about the same, yes. Yes, sir.
And then the other, something that wasn't mentioned, but I know was mentioned in the news, and I've gotten calls about it, is that's a racial incident at one of our high schools, and the concern was probably more of not understanding the process. They understand that the person was suspended with pay, and I'm not asking, I know it's a personnel issue, so we can't talk about all the details, but at least talk about the process that the community should expect in a situation such as this.
Thank you, Mr. Butler. I will, I'll start making a comment, and then I'll let Ms. Himmelgarn speak to some of the process. So the incident did occur at one of our schools. When we were made aware of that, I want to first thank the administration of that school. They acted quickly to let us know. I know our human resource department had people on the ground there pretty quick after we were made aware of that, and that person was removed and rightfully removed from our campus and has not been back to our campus. And so I'll let Ms. Himmelgarn kind of speak to how that process works, but that is the natural, I mean, the first step that we have to take with due process and all the things that are laid out there is to put them on leave with pay to begin with. So I'll let Ms. Himmelgarn speak to that.
Madam Chair, Reverend Butler, members of the board, yes, you are correct. We don't want to get too far into details about a specific employee, but like Dr. Iswick said, our certified educators are entitled to due process under state law. So removing an employee from a situation is the number-one priority, and typically that is administratively with pay pending investigation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to circle back to the custodian kind of topic, and this question might be for Mr. Iswick or Garfield. In pinging off of kind of like their training and procedure and stuff like that, it seems like a custodian that would be employed through KCS and not through Duncan &amp; Sons would have more familiarity with the schools and facilities and things like that. And I'm curious, what kind of system or training is put in place for the Duncan &amp; Sons employees that might be, that might not be familiar with schools and the facilities and classrooms and different things like that to educate them to make sure that, you know, things like this don't happen again?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Pike, so the Duncan &amp; Sons employees, they were taken through a training process so to where they weren't familiar with each building. And so basically, in their profession, they are trained employees with Duncan &amp; Sons. However, we went through our own training process with Knox County Schools, so they are very familiar with the building. I will say this is a most unfortunate situation, and it is absolutely outside of the norm, but it had nothing to do with their actual training and understanding of the building or what to do and what not to do.
Okay. I just want to make sure to ask those questions. How long is the training? Is it like a day orientation or?
They went, they went through several weeks of training prior to starting with Knox County Schools.
Okay. Do they, do they usually stay at the school that they're at, or do they kind of go around to different schools?
They typically stay at the schools where they're at, but with the needs, with the ongoing needs of schools, if one of the selected schools needs a custodian from Duncan &amp; Sons, we adjust accordingly. And we also still have our dream team that they still, we deploy those resources to those schools as well.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. So any more discussion on those items? Dr. Iswick, do you have an annual plan progress report for us?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My update was so long that I hadn't looked ahead on the agenda, so. Yeah, at this time, we're going to do the presentation of the recommendation of the charter school application by our review team, and with that, I will turn it over to who headed that up for us, Ms. Julie Thompson.
Yeah. Apparently, that wasn't supposed to be on the agenda. I think we did that last month. I don't know. Was it? Or that? Day in a report, yeah, so.
Oh, wait a minute.
It was on mine.
Oh, that was. I'm sorry. Okay.
So the confusion's not yours.
So we rewind and start again. Okay.
Charter, yes. The presentation of the charter school application. Sorry about that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We're going to have Ms. Thompson come up, and I think members of the team that were part of that process are here as well. So I just want to say before we get started that I really appreciate, this is, this is not something that we encounter every year, we take on every year. I appreciate Ms. Thompson, just in her ability to really work closely with the state board and also the state, and with trainers, and really reaching out to make sure that the process was run correctly. I appreciate Mr. Dupler and his input and us making those meetings, public meetings, and all those kinds of things. So again, you know, the process that you don't do every day is a big deal, so I want to publicly thank you, Ms. Thompson, for leading this process for us, and turn it over to you at this time.
Thank you. All right. So we are looking at the recommendation for the Knox Preparatory School, and just to give you an overview, the plan we reviewed is a plan that would be a school for boys, grade six through 12. The location would be at 967 Irwin, which is the current Boys and Girls Club. They would be leasing that. There is a focus on college preparation for minority and disadvantaged students, and it is a replication of the Chattanooga Preparatory School. So in the process of reviewing the Knox Prep application, we also reviewed the initial Chattanooga Prep application as well. The Year One will begin with a maximum of 105 students for sixth grade and will add approximately 100 students each year through grade 12. Before we begin, I would like to recognize these are the people that served on the application review team. We had a mixture of people from Knox County Schools in various departments, as well as community representatives, and then Ms. Carol Swan from Swan Educational Solutions helped to lead us through this process, as it's been about five years since we've been through this process. I wanted to make sure that we were able to do everything exactly the way we were supposed to, and so she's got extensive experience in charter schools, so we leaned on her as well. All right, so just to take you through a little bit of the review process timeline, we received, we received a letter of intent on November the 10th, and we reviewed, the review team was identified and trained January the 9th. We received their application on January the 31st. The due date was February the 1st. We received it the day before, so our actual review period began February the 1st, and we distributed the applications for the team to read and review. The application itself was over 300 pages, and so we needed some time to read that carefully. And so we had a chance about three weeks for each review team member to read over the application, make notes, develop any questions that they had, and then we met on the 24th of February collectively to plan for the capacity interview. That is the second phase. The application review is the first phase of this process, and then the second step is the capacity interview with Knox Prep. They came to the Sarah Simpson Building. We met with them, their team. There were eight members from Knox Prep that were here. We had, and all of our team members were in attendance, and so we had an opportunity to have conversation with them. We had developed our questions, but we also had a chance to ask some additional questions and really have them explain to us what their vision and mission was for Knox Prep. Once that meeting was over, then the review team met that afternoon to go through our notes that we had made in our individual review, as well as to discuss the capacity interview and to make a recommendation. And then we met again on March 10th to review the recommendation report and the consensus rubric to make sure that it met all of the expectations, and we were all in agreement that the reports said the things that we wanted to say. So I just wanted to remind you that the role of the charter application review team is to determine if the application meets the charter standards outlined in the Tennessee School Application Scoring Criteria Rubric. That's a whole lot, but basically, we had the rubric from the state, and we have the application from Knox Prep. And our job is not to determine whether or not we feel like we need a charter school. Does that application meet the requirements of the standards? It asks us to identify strengths in the application and then areas of concerns or questions. And during that capacity interview, we had an opportunity to ask some of those questions and share our concerns. There's four categories in the rubric. The first one is about the academic plan. We looked at that. And then the second one is the operations plan, and then the financial plan, and then the fourth piece, if it is a replication application, what is their experience with the current school that they're already running? And so we did all of that. And so we, again, just, we review the application independently, individually, and then collectively together to reach the consensus recommendation that we are presenting today. So to highlight some of the strengths of the application, there were clear academic goals and educational outcomes for students. There's a comprehensive plan to address the needs of students with disabilities, gifted and talented students, and English language learners. There's an intentional and strong focus on college preparation and acceptance for all students, and the school calendar and schedule are designed to support remediation, enrichment, and extracurricular activities. There is a staffing plan, extensive professional development plan, and plans to hire support and retain teachers is well thought out and aligned with the mission and vision of the school. Parent and community engagement and outreach support is evidenced through the letters of support and their participation in the application development. The budget narrative and the budget documents are based on proven sound financial guidelines. The audits of the existing school, Chattanooga Prep, have been aligned with best auditing practices and have been free of findings. This was important. They currently don't have any financial records for us to audit, so we have to fall back on what they have done previously. So the Chattanooga Prep had no findings. The governing board and advisory board are knowledgeable and experienced and will include parent and community representatives from Knoxville, and the previous experience in the successful operation of Chattanooga Preparatory, along with the passion and commitment of the leaders of Prep Public Schools, is evident. Concerns and questions that will be addressed during Year Zero. And let me say, before I talk about these, we had to look at whether the application met or exceeded expectations or partially met, and so these concerns that we have here are not things that would have caused us to have to select partially meets. We feel like they met the expectations, but these would be things that we would address as part of that charter monitoring, charter authorizing during this Year Zero as their plan. They don't, they won't have students at this time. This is their planning year, so. Continuing plans to recruit, train, and retain mentors for each student will be an important component for student success. If you've looked at their application, you know that their plan is for each student to have a mentor, and so we talked about how that was going to be important for them to have a process and have a pool of people that would be able to mentor each of the students. Continue plans to support students with special needs to access and succeed in AP and dual enrollment classes. Their plan is for all students to have access and enroll in AP and dual enrollment classes, and we know that they will need to have some support for any special needs students that they have to be able to access those classes. Ensure that there are adequate parent and community representatives on the advisory and governing board to support Knoxville Preparatory. Currently, the Prep Public Schools, and Chattanooga Prep has an advisory board and a governing board that meet in Chattanooga, and we talked about the need, we want to make sure that we have Knox County people represented on that board and that there was a plan to meet in alternating places so that we could make sure that we're attending those meetings and able to participate in that. Work with the Office of Academic Support to implement a successful plan for the startup and preparation for Year One. If that is approved for them to move forward, then that will begin an extensive amount of work in terms of helping them to prepare to open a school, and that would be part of my office's responsibility. The concerns above will be addressed during the planning year. So the recommendation is that the charter application review team recommends that the application of Knoxville Preparatory Charter School be approved for the '24, '25 school year. So just to be clear, they will have a year of planning, and then in the year '24, '25 will be when they have the first students. So just as a reminder to all of us, so the approval process, Knox Prep submitted their application on January 31st, so we have 90 days to complete that, with the 90 days beginning on February the 1st, which means then that we will have until May the 1st to either approve or to deny the application. If the local board fails to either approve or deny, the application can be deemed automatically approved. If the board denies the application, there must be a reason given that will allow the charter sponsor to revise their application. So there will have to be something that they can go back and tweak, and then they will have 30 days to resubmit a revised application that would trigger the review committee team again to meet, review their changes, and then bring another recommendation back to the board. From the point of submission of the amendments, then we will have 60 days to review. The review team will have 60 days to review that resubmitted application. The review team will have 60 days to review that resubmitted application. If the school board denies the amended application, the sponsor may appeal to the Tennessee Public Charter School Commission within 10 days. And then, at that point, the commission will review all of our documentation. We will go, we will have to go to Nashville to make a presentation of the work that we've done. The commission may uphold the denial of the school board, or they may overturn the denial and deem the application approved. If the commission deems that the application is approved, the school board and the charter school may mutually agree that the school will remain part of Knox County Schools. So if the charter commission approves, then they would come to us and we would have to decide if we were going to accept that and do the progress monitoring and oversight. If an agreement cannot be reached, then the charter school would become part of the commission LEA, and KCS will have no oversight of the charter school to ensure that they're compliant with all the federal and state laws. So that concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Do we have any questions, board members? Mr. Watson? There's spring too. Is Freddie back there?
Don't turn it off.
Yeah, don't turn it off. I won't turn it off. Seriously, you want it?
Probably not.
Maybe it's live.
All right. So, board members, the system will be, right, so you hit your light like you normally would, and then when I call on you, they'll have to turn it on from the back, so there'll be a little bit of a delay. But they can't control them back there, so that will be the system we have. So I believe, before that all happened, Mr. Watson, that you were getting ready to ask a question. So we will wait for, there you go, you're on.
Test, test.
Very good. Awesome. Thank you all for working that out. I'm sorry for the frustration that that caused, but glad we're able to get back to it. Ms. Thompson, thank you so much for the work that you did and helping lead and facilitate and work with Swan, I know, to do our charter review committee and all the, I reviewed a lot of the application, but I'm sure not near to the depth that you all did. So I really appreciate you all doing that. Ms. Thompson, is it fair to say that, based on what the scope of work that you all have been challenged to do in terms of the way it's specified in law, that you all are really not taking into account whether or not a school is good for a community or for Knox County Schools as a system, correct? I mean, that's not really what you're being asked to do in a recommendation. Right? So I think that's important for people to understand. And that last slide, maybe it wasn't the last slide, but when you talked about what would happen if we approved versus when we didn't approve or whatever, it's obvious, I think, to anybody who's followed it, that Tennessee is very favorable to charter schools. I mean, if you read the list of, you know, what happens in the event that we approve or don't approve, or if we don't do anything, it gets approved. I mean, I don't think it's a secret that Tennessee is very favorable to charter schools. And I will tell you, from my perspective, I don't think my role in this is to rehash charter school policy. I don't think that's our job here as a board either. And I know a lot of people have different feelings about charter schools and what it does and does not do for a public education system. I can tell you, in my process, I've tried to look at this school on its merits, and I would do that with any charter school. But I do have a couple of questions. We have had another charter school, and we still do have another charter school in Knox County that's actually been around since, for nine years, since 2014. Has, I know it would not have been a part of the formal charter review process, but have you all been able to get a sense, Knox County Schools, to understand what the impact Emerald Charter School has had or may have, positively or negatively, on surrounding schools within that community, schools that it's drawing from? I know that's one of the concerns that folks have expressed in the public, that another charter school would actually harm existing schools. So since we have some track record, does Knox County Schools have any sense of that?
So I'm not exactly sure what you're asking in terms of whether it's harm.
Well, when I mean harm, I really mean in terms of enrollment. So what it may have done in terms of enrollment with its schools. I think that's one of the concerns, is that by adding another charter school, it might cause some schools to have enrollment that would, that may lead them to close down at some point. So do we understand the numbers in terms of the impacts of Emerald and the enrollment there, and how it might have drawn from other schools, and has it hurt those schools?
So I will say, this is my first year in the review process with Emerald. We have supported them pretty extensively, as is required. I will say, this year, they have reduced the suspensions, they've reduced the, excuse me, they've increased their student retention, so we're not having as much going back and forth. I know that that, when I was a supervisor and director, that was a complaint that I heard, that students were going back and forth to their schools and going back to Emerald. We're seeing that greatly reduced, and their teacher retention is also increased. So in terms of what the impact is having on, they have, they draw students from several different schools in our district, so.
Can I interrupt? I think that Dr. Wilson has-
Maybe some more insight into that?
Some more numbers and insight on that as well, right?
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ms. Watson. Yes, I do. So I know, when looking at that, we tried to go back and kind of look at some numbers, because you're asking about staffing implications, and of course, with student population moving is where it starts to play into that.
Sure.
Looking, it would be hard to say exactly, school by school, what the exact impact would be. But looking at the current enrollment for our Emerald Charter, they have 284 students projected for, I'm sorry, currently enrolled at the elementary level. And if you're looking across all the elementary schools across the district, I think four or five of those are a total of 20 students or more out of that school that are part of-
So out of any one school that they're drawing from, they're drawing 20 students out of that zone school?
Yes, only in four cases across all the districts. So when you start to look, there's also a lot of single-digit, you know, type situations. And so again, how that would play out as far as impact at a school level, based on maximum class sizes, things like that, at any one grade level, because that changes K-2, then 3 to 5, all of those different cuts, it would be hard to say, year over year, exactly what, you know, the staffing implication would be. In that, in the middle school, it would be similar. Again, it would depend on grade level and things of how those distribute. We've got 149 students from our middle schools that currently attend Emerald Charter with only two schools out of that group, over 20 students being pulled from a single campus.
So only two schools in the middle school, or of 20 or more?
Yes. And then in thinking again about impact, just trying to think about impact, I think, for an additional charter focused on grade 6 through 12, focused on the middle schools and that impact for next year, I'll say on the front end that it's, you know, it's somewhat impossible to know exactly, because, as Ms. Thompson and I actually were just talking about, you know, there's no way to know exactly which schools would be impacted. We know schools that would fit the, I think, characteristics that we expect these students to, or we expect the charter school to look towards. And in looking at those, if they were to split that 105 students, let's say, equally across the four middle schools, we would anticipate, and those would be, just looking at Holston, Northwest, Vine, and Whittle Springs, if that were to happen, and again, spread evenly, which may not be the case, each of those schools could potentially lose a position or two. And again, but it would depend on exactly where they fell and how that fell out across those grade levels. Again, those are just estimates and would be hard to make firm numbers. I've got all that, I'd be happy to share with you as well.
Yeah, there's so many variables. And really, what I'm trying to get at is kind of what the maximum potential impact would be for any one school.
Right.
You know, the maximum would be 105, that they happen to draw 105 from one school, which is probably not likely.
Yeah.
I know when I visited Chat Prep, one of the things I tried to get some understanding about is how far are they drawing? And one of the things that I was learning is that they were drawing for even, from even 30 minutes away from Udoa. So I'm sure, I mean, I know the concentration is more surrounding the school, but it seems like they're drawing from much further away. Ms. Thompson, you had mentioned that the retention rate for Emerald has improved on students. And the only reason I'm asking for this number is because I know what the retention rate is for Chat Prep, and I'm trying to get a sense of it's similar. Do you know what that, what it's moved to?
I don't. We just had a, we had our visit, our spring visit with them, and they just mentioned that all of those things had improved. So they didn't give us specific numbers, but I can get that for you.
Yeah, because they're the only school that allows us to have some sense of precedent in Knox County. It'd be, I would like to know what the retention rate is for their students and also staffing. What has that grown to? And at that point, I'm happy to share what it is at Chat Prep, too, because I think it's good to kind of get a sense of, you know, it's not about good or bad, it's just having something to compare it to.
I do know that they've been very intentional in their staffing and hiring of an additional behavior dean support, to be able to support students. And so that has helped with decreasing their suspension rate and increasing students' time in the classrooms and reducing the movement from Emerald to Knox County Schools.
Thank you. I've got a lot more questions, but not for you, so I'm going to ask you one more. And that is, you had mentioned some of the impacts of us approving it versus if it goes to commission and gets approved. And you, as a part of that, you talked about oversight. Is there any other potential, what are the other potential impacts of Knox County Schools, let's say we do not approve it, and it ends up getting appealed and it gets approved at the state level? What are their impacts besides us not managing the oversight would occur? Is there any?
I'm not aware of the, I would just say, though, these are Knox County students.
Right.
And so I do feel like there's great value in the work that we've been doing with Emerald in terms of progress monitoring and supporting them. We have monthly, our special ed department visits them monthly and works with the special ed teachers, just like they do in all of our Knox County Schools. We do that annual performance review that you all have approved. You've seen that, that's extensive, that's tied directly to the charter standards. We meet monthly with the Emerald leadership team, and then we also conduct two visits throughout the year. We also attend their board meetings. And we send a weekly charter message that gives us an opportunity to communicate with them what the state expectations are. There's lots of reports that they have to send to us to let us know that they're in compliance. So all of that charter monitoring, that charter authorizing that we do, I feel like has really helped us to help Emerald to grow into a viable school that supports our Knox County students.
So even though the level of, and I'm going to use this word, not negatively, but to the level that, like, Central Office has control over our individual public schools right now, we know that we don't have that same level of control over Emerald or any other charter school, right? But to the degree that we do engage, what I'm hearing you say is, is that there is, in your mind, there's an overall net benefit to Knox County Schools being engaged in that particular charter school?
I would agree with that.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Spine, I think you're next.
No, you're on now.
Thank you. To kind of ping off of what Daniel said, can you describe kind of the exact chain of oversight that would happen if it were to remain under Knox County Schools? Because I know, like, for the people in my district and things like that, you know, if the parents go through principal and so forth, then they can come to me and then wrap it back around. I can go to Central Office. But what is that, what exactly does that look like for a charter school?
So are you speaking, if they were to have a parent complaint?
A parent complaint or any sort of issue like that that would typically come to a board member.
So, of course, we would expect them to have talked to the principal, to run, to have gone through all the chain of command at the school level, and then at the Knox Prep, or at the Prep Public Schools level. We have had, I've had to deal with one situation this year, but I've been able to talk to the parent and talk with Emerald and able to get that resolved. So it really is not our role to engage necessarily with parent complaints. We try to work with the charter school to make sure that they're able to resolve issues with parents, but-
So it would potentially be their board?
Yes.
And their board is not elected, but appointed? Is that?
I believe that's correct.
Okay. So in that case, the parents would never come to us, or we would never necessarily know that, they would at most go to you?
I believe that's correct.
I have more questions, but I think that's all for Julie. I don't know when we're supposed to kind of do this.
Reverend Miller?
Unusual, you rate for red to go. Just for clarification, because I've heard it both ways, that- Just for clarification, because I've heard it both ways, that if the commission, uh, deems an application approved, the school board and the charter school sponsor may mutually agree that the school will remain part of Knox County School, so it doesn't automatically mean
That's correct. They would give us the option.
So we have an option, so if we say no, and the commission says yes, then we have an option at that time.
Yes.
It has to be mutual.
Correct.
Mutual agreement. Just wanted to make sure that, that was clarified, because I was kind of hearing it the other way.
Yes.
It was automatic. Um, and these may not be questions, I think they are, though, in the application process, did you check the, the data of some of the responses? Because I'm getting, uh, some, some conflicts of information, and, and I'm not sure if it's just the source of the information I'm getting it from, but, uh, the, things like suspensions, and what were the, uh, percent of students suspended at Knox Prep, um, versus, uh, and then also the, the issue of students being suspended or not from Emerald Youth, that comparison, I don't know if, if I was here, you see
Comparison between Emerald and Knox Prep?
Is that a comparison that you made?
We, no, we did not.
So, so when you, but you've talked about, uh, Emerald Youth, having students coming and going? Was that suspensions?
No, that would have, that would have been students that, uh, were choosing to go back, um...
So how did they leave? You say choosing to go back to Emerald after they was suspended, or left? I, I, I was, I was confused by that.
So is my understanding, parents choosing to re-enroll their children in Knox County schools, they, that was being reduced. They were choosing to stay at Emerald. In the past, there have been difficulties with, with parents enrolling students at Emerald, and then unenrolling them at Emerald, and re-enrolling them back in Knox County schools in the middle of the year.
So, uh, you looked at that as a means of, I'm, I'm trying to understand, what was that factor in terms of evaluating this application?
We didn't, we didn't use information from Emerald to, to evaluate this application.
Okay, so...
We, go ahead.
And, and part of it is just when you said it, it kind of, uh, a, a flag went up, so, so what's the signi- what was the significance of that in terms of this application?
I think that might have been part of Mr. Watson's question about you asking the impact that Emerald had had, maybe?
Yeah, my line of questioning was, because we've only had one charter school already in Knox County, I was just trying for my, for my own purposes. I know that this was not a part of the work of the Charter Review Committee, was to understand, what are some of the trends that we've seen with our existing school, and how might they compare with the Chat Prep, actually, because Knox Prep has no data, it doesn't exist yet.
Right.
And so, that's all, that's my line of questioning, was just try to understand, how do those, do those cor- do they have some correlation there? Uh, but I'm, I'm sure it was not a part of the actual review process, so...
Okay, well, thank you, that helped clear that up. Uh, so, I was look, I, I did look at the application, and once again, I echo, not to the extent that you all did, and thank you for the effort you made, and, and thank, uh, Knox Prep for the application, they checked all the boxes. And so, uh, but I did have some questions about some specifics. When I looked at it, student selection, enrollment process, uh, how do we, how is that, I, I looked at the, the lottery would only kick in if you don't have, if you have more than the, the students, uh, that, more than a hundred and five students, so what was that enrollment process? How does that enrollment process happen? Is it first come, first served, or? I, I, I did see all of the information parents would have to provide, so in providing the information, uh, is the information evaluated to determine if that's the person that they have? How's that decided?
It's my understanding that they're going to accept the applications, um, at the, at the school level, up into, um, a hundred and five students. If they have more than a hundred and five applications, then that's going to automatically trigger a blind lottery, that they will, um, have an independent person, or a independent organization manage. So, um, for example, they could have applications from students all over the district, and when they, when they go to that blind lottery, then, um, it's not just gonna select from a particular school. It, I don't know if that, does that help answer your question?
Yes, it helps.
Okay.
Uh, so the other question was, in parent engagement and community support, I saw you had that as a strength, uh, and that was, was that the strength of the plan, or was that strength of the details of how they would do that?
That's strength of their plan, to do that, to have parent engagement.
So how
And it, we also reviewed the, um, Chattanooga Prep application, and, and their plans for student, for parent engagement in that as well.
And, and then of the sixteen letters of support, how many was from the community where the school is located?
I don't have the application in front of me.
Okay.
To apologize.
That's okay.
I don't, I can get that information for you.
Yeah, and then the other question, uh, that I had was, the, um, process of initiating, uh, well, that may not be a question for you. I, I'll stop right there, thank you.
Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for going through this giant application. Um, I, I would challenge the board members to get through it, and frankly, um, even being as crazy as I am, I've not gotten through all of it yet. But I have gotten through some things that concern me, and so I'd like to know whether in, in the process of looking at this application, if the committee had time to delve into a few things, did the committee have time to do any fact checking throughout this application to ensure its accuracy?
We were encouraged to do that individually. Uh, I know that we, um, I went on and, and tried to find lots of different places. We looked at the state report card, we looked at, at a variety of resources that we could go and, and, uh, Google and, and, and check, um, and, and I feel like other people on the committee did the same thing, as we, as we had our discussions.
Okay, I appreciate that, and the, the reason I'm asking about that specifically, regarding the claims that are made, if we're looking at page nine, and it's nine of the three seventy-seven, so the first section, there's a claim regarding segregation in a specific community, and when you look at where that data has come from, it's data from a study that was done in nineteen ninety through two thousand, so it's data that's twenty-three to thirty-three years old. So that, it concerns me that, that we're basing this application on data about segregation that is twenty-three to thirty-three years old. Um, I'm also concerned, if we were, were listening when Dr. Wilson spoke to the middle schools, um, I believe he listed Holston, Vine, Northwest, and Whittle, yet when we look at the data, Whittle isn't included in the data. So, did the committee address that at all?
We were aware of it.
So in considering this application and its focus, it's, it was okay to leave out the school that, I mean, so here's the thing, this charter school is slated to be in the middle of, well, not in the middle, but inside of the Whittle Springs school zone, yet we haven't included Whittle Springs in any of our data. I think it's also concerning that it's also on the edge of the Central High School and West High School zones, and that data's also not included. We also have a, a very liberal transfer policy to LNN STEM Academy, that's not included, nor is Career Magnet Academy, so that, it concerns me that there's absent data. And did the committee discuss that at all, or just, just were aware that they weren't there?
We were aware that it wasn't there.
Okay. Okay, I think that's that for that. Looking back at oversight, and I, I know that you said that we look at how students are doing and we support them, but as far as oversight of the actual processes that they are using, oversight of their staff, oversight of their decision-making, what kind of oversight authority do we have?
So we have, um, the authority to oversee based on state law and, um, our charter agreement that we have, um, with them.
I guess I'm, I'm asking not really where our, where we are legally said that we have oversight, but what specific oversight do we have? What can we do? What, what is the scope of our oversight?
Mm-hmm.
Beyond just submitting that annual report?
Well, we have weekly, um, as I said, we have weekly, um, communication with them through our, our weekly charter message, we meet with the, um, school leadership every month, and we, um, also attend the, um, board meetings. That's where we have an opportunity to hear their financial statements and hear of any concerns or, um, problems that they have, or celebrations that they have. Um, and we, we visit them twice a year, and they, they have reports, there's extensive reports as part of the charter, um, expectations that they are required to send to us and to the state, and, um, Emerald is always excellent about getting their reports to us on time, we have a chance to review that, anything we have questions about. Um, we have a, we have a very good collaborative working relationship with Emerald, and, um, we have been intentional about growing that, so that we can make sure that we're offering them the support that they need.
Okay, I, I appreciate that, that we are working with our current charter, but the, it doesn't, it doesn't feel like oversight to me, and I, I will give this example, um, with Reverend Butler's permission. Um, I'm, I meet monthly here with Reverend Butler, I don't have oversight of him. Um, I may hear reports that Reverend Butler gives, but I don't have oversight of him. We have a good collaborative relationship, but I don't have oversight of him. So I think oversight is when we have authority, and I'm not hearing anything here that says that we have authority of really any kind over any charter school, Emerald or any other. Um, the only authority that I know we've ever had is the authority to submit the annual report that they give us. Is there something I'm missing?
Well, if, if there were things that they were out of compliance with, then we do have the authority to go in and, and expect them to correct those things. Uh, but the, the point of a charter school is to give them some, some freedom to do, um, and do some things that are innovative, and, um, the charter law, um, allows them to do that, and, and will limit us in terms of, uh, it's not like when I was a supervisor, I could go in and, and visit the school and talk to the principal and give them suggestions and hold them accountable for that, because I was, I was their evaluator. We don't have that kind of, um, authority with a charter school because of the, of the charter law.
Okay, so our oversight is strictly in rec- our oversight is in helping them and in requesting that they do things, but we can't hold them accountable for anything?
Unless they are doing things that are
Illegal.
Illegal, correct.
Okay. Um, so, listening to the, all of the different kinds of meetings and support that you're giving, I'm looking at the, um, the authorizer fee expenses from the website, and looking at the percentage of time that each person is putting in, it seems like it's a lot of time, and yet, most of the folks on this list are putting in one or two percent of their time. I'm especially concerned that we have legal counsel listed at two percent of time, which, if, if two percent is spent there, there's no way we could spend two percent at all of our schools, and our executive director of academic supports is putting in five percent of his time, that's, the, the more we grow exponentially, are those time percentages growing that much as well? So would, if we go from one school to two, would it be reasonable to expect that that time would double?
Possibly, but, so things such as our monthly meetings, we would do those together. Um, and, um, so, um, the, the charter messages that we send out, we would be sending out, um, to both schools.
Okay.
It wouldn't just be, so it's not exactly double time, but, um, it would be more, and, um, beginning year one, then Knox Prep would also pay that authorizer fee.
Right, right. All right, I don't think I have any more questions, thank you.
Dr. Rice, what?
Sorry, thanks, I just, I just wanted to clarify one thing, too, to that, I, I think Ms. Thompson said this well, but just to make sure, I think you paint a good picture, Ms. Owen, I mean, when the state board got out of the authorizing business, so kind of the, the, the evolution of how this whole thing happened, right? So when the, when the current governor decided to create a charter committee that approves that, or that's, the state board changed its, its trajectory of what it was doing. Before, it was the, the body that approved that. Um, they moved into the business of holding LEAs in districts accountable for, uh, the, what we have to give a report every year about, you know, like, how, how are you building those relationships? I mean, it, I, I think Mr. Watson said this well earlier, too, I mean, the state laws and the state setups are, are, are favorable for that right now, and I'm not making a value or judgment call on it either way, I'm just saying, that's kind of how it's set up. So our, as an LEA, and to Ms. Thompson's point, those aren't our choices, how much time we spend, and how much time we don't spend, and how much we charge for authorization, that's all set by state law, so we're required to do that, and the state board then came out with, okay, instead of authorizing charters, we are now going to be the, the body that evaluates annually the authorizer, which is us, the district. So that's, those are the things that, that Ms. Thompson is complying with and her, her division is, and, and again, th- that's not a fee we can leverage, all that's set by state law. Uh, the fact that we have to, to become, if we, if we lose our, our ability to authorize, then, then it's a straight pass-through, this board never sees this stuff, if Knox County Schools loses, loses its ability to be an authorizer, it goes straight to a state charter. So, just saying, a lot of these things are things that, uh, are requirements by state law, and now by the state board as an authorizer, that we have our own rubric that we get a score annually on, based on have we done those kinds of things. So, again, I'm not placing a value statement on, I'm just saying, these aren't things that we can arbitrarily decide to do or not to do, these are things that we get an evaluation on from the State Board of Education that was set by the laws that were passed. So, a lot of this stuff is, again, is, is not, still no value statement, but is not our, our decision, it's what we have to do to be a functioning district, so I just want to make sure that was clear for the public.
And if I could say, really, um, since I have taken over this, uh, role of charter, um, I understand that there's, there's two prongs to this, and as Dr. Rice said, we have, um, the ability to review applications and make recommendations to the board for new charters, but we also have an expectation from the state that we comply with, with the authorizing standards, and that's quite extensive. Uh, we have to submit a report on how well we have done in, uh, authorizing and overseeing the charters that we have in place, and so, um, I feel like having one charter this year has given me an opportunity to, to stick my toe in the water and, and become very familiar, and, um, Memphis reviewed ten applications this year, and I have over fifty charter schools, so, um, you know, I feel like, uh, we've gotten a good feel for what a quality authorization looks like, and, and what the expectations are from, from my office and my department to do that.
Ms. Pike?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. I've got a few questions, so bear with me. Uh, first question is, um, does Emerald have any students that are on track for, to have a SPED diploma?
I don't, I don't know that answer. I can find out for you, but I don't know.
If you could find out, that would be awesome. Um, and then also, uh, earlier And then also, earlier, you mentioned that some students at Emerald had kind of gone back and forth and that that was reduced. And being that you had also described that the charter school has a little bit more freedom in what they can do and be innovative, what safeguards are in place for students who are enrolling mid-year or unenrolling mid-year? And what does that process look like if the curriculum might be a little bit different or a lot different?
So, you mean on the Knox County side?
From Knox County to the charter school and back, just either way, whichever way it would happen?
Well, I mean, speaking, I'll put my principal hat on. When we get new students mid-year, then many times there are some assessments, benchmark assessments, we give to them to see where their progress is and make those determinations so that we can support them wherever, you know, however they're coming to us.
So, they would be treated kind of like a student that would be coming from out of district into our district?
Well, they would be, they would share their information, you know, we always...
Would they use the same benchmark assessments or would they use different companies and different assessments?
They have, they have a couple of different things that they use, but I believe they also use Ames Web.
Okay, are they required to?
Ms. Jones? I'm going to ask Ms. Jones to come and speak because she can speak about specifically.
Sure.
Could you repeat the question?
In benchmarks and assessments for, I guess, students that would be coming potentially from this charter school back to Knox County and just in that transition, would this charter school, are they required to use the same assessments or what assessments and benchmarks would they use? Where are the requirements kind of at?
They would still be required to respond in the same manner that we would when asked. That was one of the questions that I did ask in the review process. They are using the same exact benchmarks that we use. They're also using some of the same intervention programs that we use.
Are they required to do that or is that just an elective?
I'm not sure if it's required, but I would assume that they are using the same state requirements.
Okay. That's all for that question. My next question is, are there board meetings publicly noticed?
I don't know the answer to that.
Dr. Reiswick?
I might be able to answer a couple of those questions. So, first, yes, they are. They're required by the same, same as any other public school to be able to make those. And I think, a little clarity on the benchmarking, right? So, because I've talked to Ms. Owen about this, there's a law right now being pushed around, around benchmarking and people have different understandings of what that word means. So, they will be required by state to do the same thing as a public school to do the RTI universal screener that looks at, Dr. Phillips has explained this in the past, but it looks at foundational reading skills. They're required because they are a public school to do that. The state puts out the assessments that are approved for that and it sounds like they're using the same universal screener, which in our case is Ames Web. As far as benchmarking, that typically is an assessment that people give to see if their kids are going to be proficient or not. We use Case 21 or Mastery View, it's been balled out so many times, but Mastery View, I think is what they're called now. I believe in reading through the application, they may be NW, NWA, right? MAPS, right? So, it's been a while since I've read through it, but I'm going, so I think, so they do a benchmark, but it is different than the benchmark that we use. But they would be required by law because they're a state public school to do the same RTI process. But they could pick a different universal screener as long as it's approved by the state. So, that's where you get in that kind of monitoring verse, you know, they're still required to do everything that a state public school is required to do with the same amount of flexibility. So, we couldn't come in and say, you know, you're not using Ames Web, you have to use Ames Web. They're going, well, we're using one of these other ones that the state has approved. And that would mean our to say, good, you're following the state process and the state law to get that done. So, that's where it's kind of loose tight. They still have to follow the same laws, but have some flexibility in how they do it.
And my next question is, I, as I understand it, there's an average per pupil spending and essentially that's what they will get from us. And that, you know, thank you to Mr. Scott for answering all of my questions today, especially last minute. But it seemed like some of the things, they might be using third-party vendors. And I'm curious where that funding would come from if they needed to use a third-party vendor, if that would be, or, sorry, this is just a long question and bear with me. How you had mentioned earlier with Emerald that there are times where someone from Knox County Schools needs to come to provide support. Where's that position that would do that? We're paying 100% of their salary or are we splitting their salary with the charter school if we had a position that needed to provide services?
So, it depends. They have some, it would have some services that they could contract out. For example, with Children's Hospital, Emerald contracts for speech services there. They contract with us for food services. And I'm assuming that Knox Prep would be able to do, also the transportation. They contract directly with the bus contractor.
Would that come from the average per pupil spending or is, would they get additional funds?
They don't get additional funds.
So, they would, they would never get anything additional from us? It's capped at the per pupil spending?
I'm hesitant to say never because I don't know. But I think the intent is that they would not, that they would, they have to have some additional funds, donations.
Yeah. So, like when Emerald needs to contract with, for other services with the children's, where does that expense get put? Is that in their budget or is that in our budget?
It's in their budget.
Okay.
Dr. Reiswick, do you want to speak to that?
All right, thanks. Just because I know we had our first one-on-one budget meeting with one of you all today and we, this came up in the conversation. So, it has typically been a funding of an average per pupil that gets passed on to any charter by law. With the new TESA funds that are there, the whole funding model's different. I'm so getting in Jennifer and Ron's lane, so I'll just explain this real quick. But it's kind of basically, a student is built off kind of a base amount and then for all the different services they potentially could get, those dollars go in if they receive ULL services, they special education service. So, it kind of builds out the, what a student earns. So, it will no longer be the dollars that go through based on like the BEP average for the district. It'll now be just the same as what we're getting for our students, right? So, it'll be based on every individual student's what they get. So, those dollar amounts are different. All that money will go to the charter school then and back to, you know, where we have the authority is to make sure that they are providing things. They can't say, you know, we don't have a wheelchair access, so we're not, you know, that kid came up next in the lottery and we're not going to provide that. They have to be able to put the lift gate on the bus and do all those kinds of things. They can use that from the pot of money that they, that follows the students and they can do that or they can offset that with private funds or there, whatever kinds of things they can do. But our job is to look at that and to say, you're required to do these things by federal law and/or state law. They have the ability then to go as long as we're meeting that. So, our oversight is to make sure they're doing it. So, you know, how they use those dollars is, you know, is based on that. And again, they can offset that with private money. So, to know exactly what they're doing. There's also federal dollars, right? And so, we're required if, for students who go over there, and I know Mr. Myers has a lot of background on this side too, but we provide the service. So, if there are dollars that we're using for a training, then this is how it works with Emerald and when you have a charter. If it's money that comes to the district for that, we open up for them to come to that training and X number of seats to come do that. So, we have to treat all of those schools the same when it comes to things like federal money. Their schools, if they qualify for Title I, they fit in our spiral the way we spiral out funds, like they would be treated just like a Knox County School and receive those funds to those things. Still required by the same federal law and all those, you know, the parameters that we are, that our schools are to do that. But they have a lot less oversight into, again, not the federal funds, but a lot less oversight into how, who they contract with and what they're doing. That's where we come in more as oversight at that point and say, are you doing these things? Are you providing transportation? Does every kid have the materials they need like that? Those are the things we look at. But it's to far as to say, you shouldn't use that test as long as it's in compliance with federal law and they're following Tennessee standards and those kinds of things. That's kind of where our oversight ends unless one of those laws, as Ms. Thompson said, is being broken, both either federal or state.
I think that's all the questions I had for you. Thank you.
Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Thompson, just maybe one comment and another question as well. So, I think some of what we're talking about in this financial conversation, so one of the narratives about charter schools is that they take funding from public schools. Because as we just mentioned, you know, roughly the average of a per pupil spending will come out of that school, it'll, out of a public school, a traditional public school, and it'll follow that student. And it's also true that there are more costs associated with running a school than what an individual student may need. And so, what you're doing, what you're really having a conversation about is economies of scale. And a system like ours with 60,000 students and 91 schools, there's things that we can fund from our public dollars, even though many of us feel like it's not adequate. There's things that we can fund that a one standalone school could not get funded through their public dollars. So, it makes sense that they would seek out private funding in addition to an offset because you can't run a school at quality with an average per pupil spending of Knox County Schools because you don't have the economies of scale, right? I think, so I think it's important to state that and just let, make sure everybody understands that, that I don't think any of us believe that, you know, by withdrawing students from a school that all the costs associated with that school are also going to be transferred out because they're not, because there's some other things that are going to be left behind. For instance, the upkeep of that building. You still got to upkeep the building whether or not the enrollment is 200 or if it's 300, you still got to upkeep the building, right? So, that's part of the conversation that we're having. My last question for you, Ms. Thompson, though, is around, there's the initial application and approval process, but then what happens if a school ultimately gets out of compliance or is not performing at the level that it's intended? What role does the district have in terms of potentially revoking the status or flagging the school or whatever? What are those possibilities?
There's an extensive process that we can go through. We'll work with the state charter commission to do that. And I actually have a training next week on that area.
I'm sure you're getting all the trains. I'm sure you just love it. Yeah. Yeah. So, can you just bullet point for us though, like just like the, I know you haven't gone through the training, but ultimately, does Knox County Schools have the authority at some point in the future, should it get approved and it opens, to say, hey, this isn't, y'all aren't doing it?
If they're certainly not meeting the academic expectations, then we have a process for doing that.
Well, and I think that's important to be known and I know that we're not necessarily going to hash out all the details about that tonight, but I don't think anybody wants a school half-serving our kids to be able to continue to exist in perpetuity, right? That there has to be some level of accountability.
That is part of the process of the performance review that we do each year. And so, we look at, we look at their academic data, their financial data, all of those kinds of things. And we also have the charter agreement. And in that, it states that if they're not performing, then we can seek revocation of their charter agreement.
And I know there's representatives of the school here tonight. I'm assuming it's appropriate for us to ask direct questions too. The reason I'm asking that is I think there's some questions that make more sense for you to answer and I think there's more questions that make sense for them to answer directly. You know, there's kind of two things that are happening in this conversation right now. We're debating policy and whether or not charter schools should even exist and what they do or do not do in a public education system. But also, we have a very specific application here from a very specific school about whether or not it's something we should approve for our community. And to me, that's another set of questions in my mind. So, I'm assuming that's appropriate, correct? To ask questions directly?
I haven't asked them to come prepared to speak, but I mean, I don't...
Is that something we are able to do?
Mr. Scott, is that something you are willing to, so, yeah, I mean, they're here and willing, so...
I didn't think they showed up just to fill up the first few rows.
Exactly, exactly.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Ms. Owen, I think you were next.
You have some specific...
Or Reverend Butler?
I just have one order on that question. And I was going to ask you when we first got started, but when we'd be viewing our regular agenda, we should do that then versus doing this now because right now we're basically looking at the, at the committee's application, or committee's approval, rather.
Mr. Duport?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And yeah, I turned my light on because the Knox Prep folks are under no obligation to answer any questions at this meeting, but I mean, if they wish to do so and want to honor that request, they can. That's the first thing. And the second thing is, you know, I mean, I think, I think it's the pleasure of the board, but I think to Reverend Butler's point, you know, this, this particular item is on, you know, the charter school application review team recommendation as opposed to the broader question. And, you know, Mr. Watson talked about charter policy and things like that. And frankly, charter policy's not before the board. I mean, legally, it's what's in the application and whether or not the application should be approved or not. So, thank you.
And I do know that we also have at least one administrator here tonight that has school early in the morning too, who's later in the agenda as well, so...
So, I did have my light on for another issue, but I think Ms. Owens was ahead of me, so...
Okay.
So, I just had a question about the application process. Does the application process require for there to be any research done or anything supplied about the effect of the placement of the charter school on the existing Knox County Schools? Is there any requirement for that to be done? I didn't see that it was, I just want to make sure that I didn't miss it.
You mean the impact on?
Yes.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have three questions. One, coming off of what Ms. Pike said, one coming off of what Dr. Reiswick said, and one other, and these may be either for you or for Dr. Reiswick, I'm not sure. So, looking at Member Pike's question, she asks specifically about the funds and where it might come from if they needed additional supports. And I'm looking again at the 2021-22 authorizer fee expenses list. And we know that the state puts in $35,000 for support, but in 21-22, what we actually spent was $40,691. So, where did that extra $5,691 come from? Is that $5,000 that Knox County Schools added in to those expenditures? Did that come from a charter school? How did we spend more than we had?
So, the $35,000 authorizer fee comes directly from the charter school, does not come from the state.
Thank you.
Comes from the school and the extra that would have been spent would have been in-kind work. So, it would be just as part of my, for example, just as part of my job, the hours that I put in after hours.
Thank you. I appreciate the way you said that as in-kind because a lot of times we don't think of in-kind as being an expense. So, just like, just like when we're running for office, if somebody gives us something, if somebody gives us supplies or somebody gives us time, somebody had that expense.
But I would like to say that, while I realize that we've gone over, we take very seriously the fact that these are Knox County students. And so, to do the extra work to make certain that we're following all the expectations and that Emerald is following all the expectations, that that's the reason for the extra.
Right, and that's exactly what I expect, which is why I wanted to address that because I don't want it to sound like we are not putting in that amount of support because we support our schools just like we support all of our other schools. And so, when we add in additional schools... add in additional schools, obviously, we have more places to support. So if, and this may be, I don't know who this is a question for, so if this were approved by the charter commission, and the charter commission became the authorizer, so that what Dr. Ryswick said, it would just be a pass-through, we would just be the pass-through for that funding, if the state charter commission were the authorizer, would there be any supports required from Knox County schools? Or would all of the supports be from the charter commission, from the authorizing commission?
It's my understanding that we would have no, we would have no-
Okay. So all of those, all of that in-kind time that we might expend would be the responsibility of the state authorizer, instead of from us?
That's my understanding.
All right, thank you. And I only have one last question. When talking about performance, and at what point we could look at that performance, anywhere in the application, is there an intended performance level that we expect them to reach? So when we go back, let's say 10 years from now, we are looking at this again, and, not me, but 10 years from now, we're looking at this again, and we're looking to see, did they reach the performance level that was expected? Do we know right now what that expected performance level is, or is that something to be determined by some future board?
There is expectation for improvement, and that they would, they would have improvement. They would set annual goals, just like all of our schools set annual goals. They have to create that performance plan and enter that into E Plan, and so the same expectations our schools have for academic achievement would be, would be part of that.
Okay. And I guess my justification for asking this question is really because in a legislative committee this week, there was a discussion about the Achievement School District. And the question was, what should happen with the Achievement School District after it was approved 13 years ago? And now, at this point, they ask very specifically, how are those individual schools progressing? And the answer was that some of them have risen above the fifth bottom, the bottom-fifth percentile. And one of them was in the sixth percentile. So I assume that that would not be the kind of achievement we'd been, we would be looking for. So-
It's my understanding that there's an expectation that they would achieve at a greater rate than-
But we don't have a definition of what that rate is expected to be.
There's not, I don't believe there's a specific number.
All right. Thank you very much. Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Thompson, one more question, just to, because I don't think I fully heard the answer when Reverend Butler asked it. I don't think it was specifically addressed. He used the, he was talking about the idea of cherry picking, and talking about the lottery, and what would, that once those 105 slots are taken up, then it would move to the lottery. But then what happens, what's the litmus test before that? And he asked the question, he said, is it first come, first served? But that part of the question to get answered. So before the lottery gets kicked in, what is the school actually using to determine which of those applicants they approve or not? Do they have to approve every applicant up to the first 105? Or what is that test, that's the litmus test on that application? Is it first come, first served, like-
It's my understanding that it is.
And the reason this is an important question is, the reason that's an important question is because I know that's one of the major concerns of the community, is that this charter school specifically would end up just choosing kids who already have a likelihood to be higher, more higher proficient, and that they're just going to pull those kids out from our schools. And, I mean, to me, that's a really valid concern. And I want to understand, is there room for that to happen? And, you know, could there be something afoot to make that happen? I'm sure there's lots of other things that are indirect, like marketing, and how you market, and things like that. But in terms of the application process and the criteria itself, is it first come, first served, until they get to that point of needing lottery?
It's our expectation that it would be first come, first served. And then once they have that 106th application, then it would-
So let me ask that, though, because that, to me, doesn't make sense, in that if you only have 105 spots, and you get to the 106th application, why do you need a lottery? Because it's already full. Does that make sense? So-
But it depends if it's happening during their application period. So they have an application period, just like Emerald has an application period.
Sure.
And so if they-
So, okay, so let's just, I'm just throwing out some refund, because I really don't understand how this works. So let's say they had 150 applicants apply for the first class. If it really is first come, first served, and, okay, let's say, out of those 150, only 120 stay in the application pool. I work with families all the time who have to apply for the services at the restoration house. I get people withdraw application, and they do all that. But let's say 120 actually stick it through, complete the application, and go through the whole process, right? If it really is first come, first served, then you would never need the lottery, because you have more applicants than slots. So those 105 would be filled. So what would actually cause a lottery to be tripped if it truly is first come, first served? And I don't know if somebody else from the school might be able to answer this, which I'm fine, but to me, it's an important part, and I don't know that it's spelled out enough in the detail of the application to understand how that works. We've talked a lot about lottery, but to me, it doesn't make sense the way we've described it. Because if you filled 105 slots with first come, first serve, you would never implement a lottery.
Well, it's my understanding they have an application period. And I believe Emerald does the same thing.
Sure.
So they have an application period. And they take as many applications during that period as they have.
Right.
And so if they don't have 105, then it's first come, first serve, and they take the ones that they have.
Okay, so now I think I understand. So if it's 120, then all applicants in that pool are up for lottery?
Correct.
I got you. That makes sense. Thank you.
Right.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I wasn't clear.
No, no, it wasn't you. There's just because there's a lot of, there's nuance to it. And so I probably was not asking the question well, but that makes sense. Yes, thank you.
Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Looking at the lottery, I understand the blind lottery, and my question would be, what if there were significantly more applicants than slots? And during this process of blind lottery, over 50% of the students ended up coming from a high-income area? Would that change the focus of the school?
I don't, I don't, I don't think, I don't think it would. I think they would, they would take the students that they received in the lottery.
So potentially, let's say we had 300 students apply for 105 spots, it's possible that over half of those could come from a much higher-income area of the county.
It could.
Thank you.
Ms. Henderson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to offer up some clarifying information, too. On the Tennessee DOE website, there is a charter school enrollment and lottery procedures. So that may be something, after the meeting, you want to kind of look through, might answer some of the questions.
All right. Mr. Watson?
I appreciate that. I think it's, I think, I'm sure all of us do this. There's some questions that are being asked that I think some of us actually know the answers to. But part of the reason why they're being asked is because I think the community has the questions. And I think it's important for them to understand the process and how it works. Because regardless of what the decision is, I think the community needs to know that we all have done our due diligence, and we've tried to ask the right questions, and we've tried to ask them publicly, so that way they understand the information that we're using. So I appreciate the time to address those questions. Thank you.
I agree.
All right. So does anyone else have any other questions or comments for Ms. Thompson as far as the presentation and recommendation of the charter school application review team? All right. So I do think that, for members, we do need to move on with our regular agenda items. You know, if the board feels strongly that we want to hear from the folks from, Mr. Scott or the folks from Chattanooga Prep, you know, we could do that at the end of the regular agenda, if there's not any strong opposition to that. All right, so we will continue on at this point with our regular agenda items, and we'll add that at the end, seeing no opposition. So Board Members, Superintendent Ryswick and I have agreed to the addition of consideration of contract with River Media as item 8C9, and a data-sharing agreement with United Way of Greater Knoxville as item 8C10, due to time sensitivity. As always, we can entertain questions and discussion as we review the rest of the regular session agenda. But I wanted to make you aware of those two new items on Thursday's agenda before we begin discussion. All right, so beginning with the consent agenda, item A, A or B? Moving into items and contracts, C, 1 or 2? 3 or 4? 5 or 6? 7 or 8? Moving on to section 9, A or B? C or D? E or F? G or H? I or J? K or L? M or N? Or O? Moving into grants, 10, A or B? Item C? Or D? Going into, Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have, I have questions about item C10C, the memorandum of agreement with the Boys and Girls Clubs regarding the education after-school programs. In looking at our requirements for providing tutors, that we are required to provide because of the third-grade retention law, do we have, what kind of oversight do we have of these tutors? What kind of background checks do we have? I know that the Boys and Girls Clubs' background checks are quite extensive, but do we have any kind of oversight of those tutors, or is it strictly through Boys and Girls Clubs?
Dr. Ryswick?
Thank you, Ms. Owen, Madam Chair. I'm actually going to let, see if, I'm not sure if Ms. Thompson wants to address that, or if Ms. Himmelgarn, can Ms. Thompson just to, we could give you a seat, that might be better.
So this is another part of my responsibility, so. All right, so I apologize. Tell me which item we are on.
It's 10C.
Okay.
It's the, it's the Boys and Girls Clubs Lottery for Education After-School Programs Grant Application. Is that the one I'm really meaning? I'm, what I, my question is the one for tutors for-
I was going to say, this is not, this is not about the tutors. This is their-
Oh, that's the, okay, that's the United Way one. Okay.
Right, because they're working through the United Way-
Got it.
-for the tutors, and they're working with Christine Pope-
Okay.
-in our department.
Have I missed that one, or am I not there yet?
See one?
She was moving so fast.
This one, this one is just the-
Okay. Ms. Christie was moving faster than I could read.
I tried to pause.
So on the United Way one, so in this case, I don't know as much about the background checks. I've seen the Boys and Girls Clubs' background checks, and they were, they were more extensive than ours.
They've been extensive, yes.
So do we know what kind of background checks will be involved, what kind of oversight we have of those tutors?
I do not, but I can find out.
Okay, thank you.
I may have an answer. I was just, just because I looked at the contract, is that what you're looking at, Mr. Duport, the MOU? It looks like on the responsibilities line that it talks about, at least to the background check, about KCS, I lost it when I looked up. Oh, here it is. On E, it says, ensure all tutoring program staff complete the required KCS background and vetting process. So, I mean, that's, it looks like that part matches. That doesn't answer the oversight question, but I just quickly found the background one, so if that helps.
Mr. Duport?
Thanks, Madam Chair. Ms. Owen, yes, I mean, that's what I was looking at as well. Dr. Ryswick, and thank you. So the, according to this agreement with United Way, they're going to have to go through the exact same background check that Knox County Schools' employees do, which is an FBI fingerprint background check.
Ms. Himmelgarn?
Because they are going through the all-court tutoring program, just like our tutors are, there is training from the state that they're required to attend, just like our tutors are.
Madam Chair, I don't have anything to add, other than, I was going to say what Mr. Duport did. It is the TBI background check, the same as all KCS employees.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just, I just want to, I'm going to ask it again, I'm sorry. I want to make sure, what I heard was that it's the employee background check, not the volunteer background check, because I know it's quite different to come in as a volunteer and have your ID checked. It's, it's not, you know, not as extensive.
Ms. Himmelgarn?
Yes, it is the same as the KCS employee background.
Thank you. Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm sorry, I missed one, too. Actually, item A, under, under 10. And, Dr. Ryswick, there's no substantial changes to the SIR plan in this, correct?
Thank you, Mr. Watson. No, and this is just a required, and Ms. Himmelgarn may want to take this, just required every six months for us to submit back to the state, so there was no significant change.
Thank you.
All right, so anything else on those items? So we're good. We're good on the 10C, that grant with the Boys and Girls Club, or the memorandum agreement. And then the last one would be 10D, the Foundation for Agricultural Grant for South Knox Elementary School. All right, moving on to contracts. Item 11A? Or B?
All right. Ms. Owen?
You, Madam Chair. Do the after-school program employees go through the same background checks as our employees?
I'm going to go with Ms. Thompson's nod to say, yes, it appears that they do.
Thank you.
Okay, regular agenda items, 12A. Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Ryswick, specifically about the early release day. We are in our inaugural year of that. And I know last year, when we had this conversation, when we were considering approving it and adding it to our calendar, one of the compliments- when we were considering approving it and adding it to our calendar, one of the comments that were made at that time is that we would kind of be evaluating this and its efficacy and how well it's working, that there was actually be potential for maybe adding a few more days over time. There's, I don't see any recommendation to add any days, I still count six. But what has the school system learned through this process and has it, have we seen tangible benefit in where the, where the complication's been?
Thank you, Mr. Watson. I'll, I'll share my thoughts and have Dr. Wilson jump in too. So I think it's kind of been interesting. So, so we elected to, had a long conversation about, about going in and leaving these in moving forward. We've actually had, I would say, not as much like parent pushes, but I think we had projected, you know, kind of thinking it was going to be a lot of people saying that. And that didn't mean there's not any, I mean, there's the occasional, you know, we have to pick our students up and do that sort of thing. But it's been interesting through our, our regional teacher councils and, and family councils, we've gotten some input too. So I think, I would say this from my surmise, and I'll let Dr. Wilson weigh into it. I think anytime the first year you do something, it's obviously you're figuring it out. And I think we've had some schools that, it's, it's been great and they've, it's been really useful and all those things. I think there's some schools that, that there's been still some conversation about, you know, kind of the real outcome, what are we trying to get to? I think there was some miscommunication about what those days were supposed to be, they were meant to be school-based driven professional development, because the only times we pull them out are district-wide ones like textbook adoptions and things like that. So I think some of that, you know, re-clarifying some of those, we get input on some of that stuff. So from, from my seat, I would say too early to tell, so we keep it in and continue to work on it. But I know Dr. Wilson's looked a lot closer at some of those things.
Dr. Wilson?
Yes, I, I would echo everything Dr. Ricewick said, because we've talked about it quite a bit in that. And, and really kind of, I think, a place that we'll have a chance to have an expanded conversation in kind of with you guys about that. Our regional teacher councils have operated this year and been very, I would, I would say we, our goal for those committees and our, our regional family councils has been to be sort of product oriented, like what are the areas we can identify, we can lift up and continue to, you know, maybe we find some, some suggestions, some, some considerations we need to think through as a district. Maybe it drives into work that the next regional teacher council, family council we get into. And it's been kind of telling across the, the teacher councils, this was something that came up quite often. And it wasn't something that they were pushing back, I mean, back to, to Dr. Ricewick's point, saying, we don't want this, but it was kind of questions around purpose and, and, you know, ensuring that, that the opportunity to be together was used in a way that really helped them and impacted their classrooms, felt coherent and connected to the goals of the district and to the school. So I think we already recognize, hearing that through multiple teacher councils, that that's something we want to, to dig into further. A little bit predating me, but you know, my understanding in the beginning, this really was something from, that came from our principal group as, as needing some opportunities to put, to have, set aside additional time for professional development for their teachers. And so again, I think we want to make sure where all of these, you know, lines cross, that everybody's kind of got the same set of expectations, that, you know, we feel a return on investment for that time. I would say we do recognize that it can be challenging to have that shift in schedule for families and, and so we want to make sure as we include those days and calendars moving forward, that we've got a really tight understanding of what the best use of that time is and making sure they were doing it. As Dr. Ricewick mentioned, I think the original agreement, as they put those in the calendar, was kind of a two-year try-it-out kind of pilot. We did include it in the calendar this, for the, for the 2425 year, because honestly, we felt like, you know, if a decision was made to do something different, it's easier to take it out than it is to put it in. And so that was kind of our thinking on that and, and leaving to get open to both kind of wrap these teacher and family councils this year, see where we land. An additional step, again, in anticipation of that, that we're intending to take, is to also collect some survey information, both from the teacher council and the, and the family council, to dig in a little bit deeper on, on their feelings on it. And I think that'll be part of what we'll bring back when we talk about the, the outcomes of the teacher and family council. I think our goal for that, I don't know the exact month, Dr. Ricewick may have that nailed down, but our goal was to kind of get into the summer and, and bring back just kind of what came out of those teacher and family councils and, and be able to talk through some of that.
Thank you.
All right, item 12B? 12C? Item D? E or F? Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to just give some love to Ms. Buhr, the principal over there at Cedar Bluff Elementary School, and the administrators, at least four administrators before her that have been managing and running not only Cedar Bluff Elementary School, but also a preschool with over 250 kids in it, with 40 staff of its own. So it's a big job, it's in a separate building, and I really appreciate her taking the time to articulate the challenges of that. She wrote a tremendous memo. And Dr. Wilson, I appreciate you hearing that and, and helping her navigate through that process and, and bringing this. And I know that Karnes has some of those same challenges, and I know that they're also adding some, some classrooms to their preschool. One, given the work of the United Way and bright steps and just what we've been hearing of that effort, and I know we've, we've been doing this for a very, very long time, but I'm glad that our community is elevating the need for this and that Knox County Schools is still at the table and doing more and more to help prepare young people even in those earliest years. So I think this will be a value add. I know there's a little bit of a fiscal note on that, you know, in terms of maybe a $20,000 additional cost, but it's going to be more than worth it, and I think it's going to make what's happening at both those schools so much better. So, thank you.
Mr. Watson? And then the last item, 12G, which is discussion and possible action on the recommendation of the charter school application review team. And I know we also added, if anybody has any questions for the folks here from Chattanooga Prep, my question to board members, we have this item and we have 20 people signed up for public forum, which is about at least 60 minutes, right? So do we want to take a brief 10-minute break before we tackle this last item? Is that...
Any questions? Because if they don't have questions for folks from Knox Prep, then, you know, we can let them know that and they can leave if they want.
I believe Reverend Butler, did you have some questions for them? You did not? Okay.
Does anybody have a question? Okay, so, okay, thank you.
Yeah, they're signing up for public forum too, several of the students. So, yeah. And you all have been so patient, thank you. Just 10 more minutes and then we'll get back to this. Is that okay?
Thank you for bearing with us. So we will move into the last agenda item. Ten G and Mr. Triplett?
I just simply want to say, you know, I think the, no disrespect to the questions, but I think we're asking the wrong question. The only question we're really answering with this vote is whether or not we want to have oversight or the state have oversight. They have a strong application, they have a history. And so ultimately, they will get approved whether here or there. And they will get, in the neighborhood, probably around a million dollars of Knox County Schools taxpayer-funded money. And they will get 105 or whatever, at the beginning, 105 students of ours. So we get the choice of whether we want to have oversight over that million dollars and those students, or whether we want the state to take that. And I think that's really the only question we're answering.
Ms. Sowan, were you next?
I don't know. I agree with Mr. Triplett that that's, that's really the overarching question. But I think also, in determining that, I think there's a lot more that I would like to know before I determine that it's, is or isn't something that I would want to have oversight of. So I also might note that in some discussion earlier this week in Nashville, it was noted that about 40% of the applications that have gone on to the charter commission have been approved. So that's sort of, that's sort of where they are right now. We don't, of course, know how many they might be doing this year. And oddly, the same number is about 40% of the fixed costs don't change when students move between schools. So that's, that's all I have for right now.
Reverend Butler?
I don't think we're asking the wrong questions. I think that we have to ask the questions that we ask because these things are going to affect the students in our community. And in District One, we've already been affected by one charter school. And now we have another charter school that we will be affected or impacted. Not looking at it as a negative or positive, leaning toward negative, quite honestly. But whenever you take students out and funds out of a school, it's going to affect that school. And it's going to affect the schools in our, in, in the District One and other community. It's going to affect the feeder schools of Austin East and Fulton and some of the others that were named. So I think these are questions we need to ask and also understand. Because even though they may be going to the charter school, they still are students and parents in District One that I, that I have a charge to serve. I have a charge to ask these questions to make sure that the student selection and enrollment process is going to be one that's fair. And also making sure that the parent engagement and community support in the application is clear about how do we know it's a strength and not? And I think we need to look at that. One of the things I think happens a lot of times is, and this is something that I've heard and I've even said it, is that this, this process, the deck is stacked with marked cards. So if you're saying to me, the only choice I have is whether or not that the, it's going to be, who's going to have the oversight of it, you're telling me I really don't have a vote on approving it or not? If that's the case, then why are we going through all this process? So we either going through the rubber stamp it, or we're going to ask the questions. I think we have to, every one of us have to be sure that these things are happening. And there's no reflection on this organization. They, they, they did a lot of work on this application. And I didn't read all 666 pages, but I did read some significant parts of it because these were areas that I got questioned from. My, my, my emails were full of concerns from parents. And so if that's the case, then we have to ask these questions. And these questions are coming from people who really care about having their kids at a good school. It's not that they're against a charter school or not. They just want to make sure that we make sure. So I think we have to ask these questions.
Ms. Henderson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree with Mr. Triplett. At the end of the day, this is to talk about the application in front of us, not us debate our personal beliefs on charter schools. And at the end of the day, it's how this affects students and kids.
Ms. Spine?
Thank you. Again, I really appreciate Mr. Scott's answering all of my questions today and especially last minute and also our meeting last fall. It was really informational to just have that time to go back and forth. And after our first meeting, our first Zoom meeting last fall, where I got a chance to ask questions, and then I went to community members because it's less likely that my district is, will be affected by this. And so I sat down with Deja Lundie to chat about, you know, what the school can bring, what are some, some of the issues that it's going to tackle, and then also some of the issues that our schools are facing. And, you know, one of the things that I see in, you know, their student handbook is that parental involvement and how important parental involvement is. And I think that that's definitely what we can see is lacking for a lot. And it's not, I don't believe it's not because parents don't care, although I'm sure that exists. But when you're working three jobs or are a single parent or doing any of that stuff, it's very hard to show up. And even if you want to. And, you know, they have said that if a parent can't show up, they're going to come to them and that they are, you know, willing to bridge that gap. And I think it's unfortunate that we haven't done that for the parents. I think that when you look at the stats from Vine to West Valley, and you see that West Valley is essentially three times the size of Vine and is a top 10 school in the state, and Vine is in the bottom fifth, and you have to ask the question, why? You know, where are all the things? And that's essentially what I did, was go to the community and ask, why are all of these things like this? And just to somewhat make it short, I also went to someone that I knew had a lot of money, that I knew wasn't necessarily educated or invested in some of this stuff. And I said, what would it take to get you to build a school that, you know, donates some millions of dollars? And he said, well, I'm not going to do that. It doesn't benefit me. So my question is, this seems like it has some worthwhile things. And I understand that the CEO and maybe the co-founders are here, why? I would really like to know why that you formed this school in as short as possible and why you're willing to put extra private dollars, potentially your own dollars, into this school to bring to Knox County?
So you would like someone from Knox Prep, Mr. Scott, or someone to? I guess you're up.
To the board, thank you all so much for the opportunity to be here. I know I've answered a lot of questions from each one of you, having engaged over the last year here in the community of Knoxville and got to know a lot of you on this board. So I'm just humble today to be here and engage in this process with the community of Knoxville. I can tell you, our one focus, and you're going to hear this from any member of our team, you talk to our founders, our governing board, we're about kids. You might ask, why Knoxville? Why not another school in Chattanooga or Cleveland or Nashville? Why Knoxville? We received a numerous of calls from community members here in Knoxville. Parents that would call and say, hey, do y'all have a bus that goes from Knoxville to Chattanooga every day for my son? Obviously, we do not, we would love to provide that, but we don't have it. We heard from community members, we heard from leaders. Can you all replicate the success, the A-campus that we had last year, the Level Five campus that we had last year with our young men? Young men being here on their spring break today to advocate for their future, what we call Brotherhood Prepsters here in Knoxville. Parents here in Knoxville, we heard, can you replicate what you're doing, the success here in Knoxville? So we tell our young men every single day to do more to achieve more. So if we're called and we're asked by a community, I have special love for the community in Knoxville. I lived in Knoxville for five years as a UT student, was a youth pastor here in this community, engaged with the city of Knoxville for quite some time. We have a lot of similar challenges, but we also have a lot of similar opportunities. So hearing those opportunities from families, from community members, we, we want to rise to the occasion and we want to serve. And I can tell you, this is not a us versus y'all. We want to work together. Our track history in Hamilton County, from our school superintendent to our board members, we're collaborative. Team and family is one of our core values that we talk to our students and also as an organization. So we want to, if approved, we would really take that honor and that responsibility to sit down with the administration, sit down with board members and say, what are the goals and how could Knox Prep be a tool in the toolbox to help the community? So when you ask why, we see Knoxville students as our students. We, we don't know if we're going to be approved or not or yet, but the families, the parents, the kids we've talked to, we already love them. We already want to provide an educational opportunity for them to succeed. So that's our why, students. Hopefully, that answers your question.
Do they have whys?
Sure.
Thank you so much. I know this is, I'm Ted Alling, this is my wife Kelly.
Kelly Alling, we're the co-founders of Chat Prep. For these amazing young men right here, just a few of them. There are several whys. I mean, at the end of the day, it's about kids and families. We were fortunate enough, Ted and I, to tour CJ LA, an all-public girls charter school.
Great question. And I would love for you also to ask one of our students the benefits they receive from attending an all-boys school. As two cities, Chattanooga and Knoxville, that share a river, share university systems, share a lot of core values, we're facing our communities with, with leaderships of future, the lack of leadership of the future. And our model of an all-boys can really give young men the opportunity to lead. You see some of our leaders here today, our student body president, vice president, this is our Student Government Association. These are the future leaders of Chattanooga. You all have young men in our community, in this community today, just like these guys, that would benefit from an all-boys school where they can be themselves, where, where education can be tailored for what boys love and the development that boys need. Our grit speakers that we bring in every single month, leaders from our community, national leaders. Peyton Manning was one of our speakers in the past, coming and speaking about boys and their development and leadership, character. It is essential as we're grooming our young men for the future, to be the future leaders of our community. We surround them with love, we surround them with support, we surround them with excellent opportunities in academics. I know for me, growing up in a single mom household, first-generation college student, having a mentor in my life was critical. I would not be standing here today if it weren't for that mentor. I would have never went to the University of Tennessee as a first-generation college student, had it not been for my mentor. So the mentors that our boys have in partnership with Big Brothers, Big Sisters, which we would do the same here in Knoxville, provide a mentorship model that not only helps with academics, but helps with that development. Our mentors follow our students not only through middle school, high school, but for life. One of our students, Tayo, and I hope you get to meet Tayo, Tayo, raise your hand. He just got accepted to pre-college at Brown University, first-generation college student. You know who he called first to write his letter of recommendation to Brown, his mentor? So there are young men, just like these guys here, that would love the opportunity to have a mentor, to help guide them, to help nurture them for the future. One piece of our model, we have an internship program for our seniors, our students. Their senior year, at 12 o'clock, they'll leave, they'll go to internship opportunities throughout the city. That provides career-based learning and it provides excellent internship and future job growth for businesses here in Knoxville. We've heard from business like Axle Logistics that has a staffing issue. And the, the ability to invest in young men, invest in the future into a model and they be mentors in our school will provide excellent job development for the future. So I would challenge you to really, if you have questions about the all-boys model, do research. There's a lot of data around how single-gender models, even our girl's schools, we're next door to Chattanooga Girls Leadership Academy. There's data around how if parents choose to send their child to a single-gender school, the benefits academically and development that can have on their lives. So I hope that answers your question.
And did you consider any demographic differences between Chattanooga and Knoxville? And will there be any modifications for that?
Absolutely. We'll rise to the case. Absolutely. We'll rise to the occasion to meet all students. We look at the whole child and look at all of our students in terms of where they're from and to meet their needs. We understand, and during our study and our analysis here in Knoxville, we understand that demographics are different. And it can be, one example of that, the Hispanic population in Chattanooga is larger than Knoxville. The income economic disparities are different amongst different races. But that's why our focus on the whole child, focus on every child, no matter where they come from. We believe that if adults set the bar high for kids, no matter where the kid's from, no matter the race of the kid, or the income level of the kid, they're going to meet that challenge. That's why we call our students prepsters, all of them prepsters, because we believe they can be the leaders of tomorrow and achieve great things.
What organizations and leaders in Knoxville did you all reach out to? And have you worked with to kind of adapt all of this?
Many. I can tell you, we have a school van we bought, purchased about a year and a half ago. And that's what I drive here to Knoxville. We put 50,000 miles on it in the last year. I've been here to Knoxville at least 60 times over the last year, meeting with community members, many of you, the University of Tennessee, leaders in East Knoxville, leaders in Western Heights, leaders, political leaders, parents. We had community forums. We also had stuff on our website to allow parents to reach out with suggestions, feedback. So a variety of different people of different backgrounds, leaders from our community, we talked to and listened to. The same approach in Chattanooga, we believe, you can look at our governing board and see that we're very diverse in terms of our backgrounds, of our leadership, but also our governing. So we wanted to make that same approach here in Knoxville, who we're talking to. Because we believe it takes a village to raise a child, and a village is everyone, not just one area. And the first question, when I would have coffee, or a public forum, or a community forum of parents, would be, what do you want to see in education in your community? What strengths are there? There's a lot of strengths. I remember going to the event a couple of weeks ago that Dr. Ryswick in the University of Tennessee put on with the 70% by 2023. I was charged up and pumped up when I left because I was like, we're a college preparatory model. That gap is 410 students. We can meet that. We can help you meet that goal with Knoxville Prep. So hearing the feedback, hearing the goals excites us because our model can help, again, be that tool in the toolbox for Knox County schools.
So I've met, I know you've met with a lot of us in this room, but can you specifically list any of the leaders or organizations from East Knoxville that you have met with?
They're listed in the charter application, all the various groups. We had, our first community gathering was in East Knoxville at the Change Center, where we had members of the community come out, give us input. We have an advisory board, a couple of advisory board members from East Knoxville, one being a parent, so.
Who is that? Who was the parent from East Knoxville?
Ms. Goldie, whose husband is here, is a potential future parent, has been on our board. Deja Lundey, who's a commissioner, District 1, has a lot of background information, has all.
Is she on your advisory board?
Yes. She was actually one of the first people here in Knoxville that I met with and got input.
And any organizations that are in East Knoxville, besides the Boys and Girls Club?
We have heard feedback from the Urban League. We've heard, there was an event we went to for, there's been so many, I can't remember specific names. But there was an event we went to that was building future leaders of color to teach in schools that we went to. There was community groups, there's churches we met with. There was a variety of different people and parents and students that we talked to, to get input for our school. Again, the list is in the application. I can't, I'm sorry, I can't remember exactly who, because there's been so many. But I can tell you, we've been in East Knoxville a lot.
Have you met with anyone that might have experience with gangs in East Knoxville? And kind of pulling boys out of those and working with them and providing services and support for them? Because I assume that that would be some of your students.
Yes, we, Deja Lundey, Commissioner Lundey was one of those. I know she's been on the ground in East Knoxville, District 1, working with schools and different organizations. We also met with the KCS, the Knox City Police Department. Sheriff Noel was one of our official, original advisor members. And we talked to, he and I have had several meetings. But again, if approved, this would be something we would continue to work in the community and hear from families, hear from community members as we build our school.
I'm not sure who was next over there. Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, going back to the charter review process, I mean, I think there's a couple of things that are happening. One is that the state really regulates that in terms of how the charter review happens. We've got that report, but I think it's also incumbent on us as Board of Education members for Knox County Schools to do our own due diligence. Because the questions that that charter review process can't answer are the questions that we need to be asking, right? We, there's limitations. We heard that from Ms. Thompson in terms of what they can review and what they can't review. And so I think that's incumbent on all of us to do that due diligence. And I'll say, I've been engaging with folks around this issue for at least the last six months. Mr. Scott's always been very available. And I've also met with others and had the pleasure of going down to see the school this past week. Got to meet some of the gentlemen here that are with us today. One of the things that I did in that process was I asked to meet with students, I asked to meet with parents and teachers of the school in different groups, all separately, with nobody from the school present. And the reason I did that is because we've all been in rooms where authority is in that room, and you get different responses than when authority walks out of that room, right? We've been in those spaces. And I will tell you, I really appreciated that opportunity because I was able to dig into some things with those different constituencies that were concerns that I've heard in this community, but also concerns that I've had myself. And all, and my goal in these comments is not to persuade anybody. What I'm saying is that any piece of information that I've wanted to have access to, I've been able to get it. And I appreciate that level of transparency. I'm not saying I've gotten all the information, because maybe there's information I haven't looked for that maybe I should. But anything that I've asked for, I've been able to get. So I do appreciate that and the responsiveness that you all have had. The, I do have a couple of questions, and I think they are questions that the community has had. And one is going back to, I know you referenced a lot of the research around, you know, boys-only schools versus girls-only schools. I've looked at some of that research as well. Can, and I know when I first heard that, oh, there's, there might be a boys' school, my very first thing instinctually in me was, oh, there's going to be problems with socialization. That's the first thing that popped in my mind. So can you speak some to that? I'm not necessarily asking you to like cite academic references, but can you speak to some of that and how you all are addressing that at Chat Prep? I know you already mentioned that you have an all-girls school next door, but I know there's some other things that I think are happening, and what your intentions may be to help address some of those socialization issues locally?
Absolutely. We believe the single-gender model really helps our boys in the classroom by removing distractions, any potential distractions, but also provides a model where boys can be their self, build brotherhood, build leadership for the future. But the socialization outside of school with the opposite gender is very important to us. And our boys will tell you, they find ways to hang out with the girls. We host various events.
I'm seeing some smiles right now.
I don't think anyone here potentially has that issue. But we have social events outside of the school. We're hosting a prom, we have dances, we have skating parties. We have a cheerleading team that goes to our football games. So we, we're very aware of that. We hear from our parents, and we would do the same for Knoxville Prep, being responsive to our parents. We have a Knoxville Prep and will continue an advisory board that has parents and students on it to give feedback. But we provide those social events outside of the school day where boys can interact with girls, and so does CGLA, the girls' school next door to us. They also have social events to interact with boys, so.
And some of that is happening daily throughout the week with some after-school.
Yes.
Opportunity. So can you speak to that in terms of how that works?
Absolutely. Would love to. So, and this is what's going to be great, if approved, that we'll replicate here to Knoxville as a partnership with the Boys and Girls Club. Because we have an excellent partnership in Chattanooga with Chattanooga Boys, Girls Club, where boys and girls interact with each other in the activities through the Boys and Girls Club after school, whether that be tutoring, games, enrichment, activities. We will have that same partnership here in Knoxville. We'll be at the Boys and Girls Club, so our boys would continue going, just like at Chattanooga Prep, after school to the Boys and Girls Club. Their regular programming will still be happening at that site.
Which is coed?
Which is coed. So boys would still be able to interact with girls and vice versa after school at that site. That's what, that's one thing that made that site very attractive to us.
Okay, so I'm going to be blunt for just a minute, okay? So we know that the, your, the targets that you all have had in Chattanooga was to specifically work with kids who are coming from underperforming schools, however you define that, mainly minority students, economically disadvantaged. I know the numbers are somewhere around 70%, 70% black, somewhere around 28% or so Latino. And then the, the, by far the minority is white students. And then the numbers that I saw, somewhere around 70% economically disadvantaged, right? So you all are three white folks standing here, right? And I've seen a lot of white saviorism, and I've been guilty of it at different times. And I think that's a concern that folks have in the community. Now, one of the things I was frankly impressed with when I went down there was, although you three people happen to be white, the, there's a lot of representation within the school, way more than what I've seen in any other school that I've been in, frankly. So how do you all, and, you know, as also somebody who works in the community and works in lower-income families with the Restoration House and the organization that we work with, you know, I think it's important to be mindful of that. So can you all speak to that a little bit? Like, how would you help assuage concerns from the community that here's some white wealthy folks who want to come in and save our kids? I mean, frankly, right? I'm not saying that's who you are. I'm saying, I'm just saying that is, that's a real concern that folks have, and they've seen it done over and over and over again.
And we're very self-aware of that. And I think our Chattanooga Prep model speaks to it in terms of our hiring practices and how we recruit our staff, and ensuring that we have staff members that look like our students in front of them. Our proposed principal is very, Mr. Howard, if you'll wave your hand, Mr. Howard. Our incoming board chair, Mr. Webb. Our chief human assets officer, Dr. Almer, is working with various groups throughout the state, UT Martin being one of those, where we're really intentionally recruiting leaders and teachers of diversity to be around our students. So we're very self-aware of that. And we, we speak to our intention of focusing on kids, excellent academic outcomes for our parents. A question earlier is, how are we going to be held accountable? I ask you, please, please hold us to the highest accountability metrics possible. We want to meet those. If not, shut us down, please. Because we want to provide the very best for our students. And I think you will see, if you talk to our parents at Chattanooga Prep, our students at Chattanooga Prep, they will say that our organization is focused on their outcomes. Tayo going to Brown University this summer for pre-college, that's our focus.
Really, my last question that I've heard again and again in the community, and again, this is not specifically about Chat Prep or Knox Prep, but it's a concern that folks have about charter schools in general, and it's, you all are a charter school. So how do you all manage and help come alongside and engage students with disabilities? I know one of the concerns that folks have is that charter schools cannot meet the needs of disabilities and the, of kids with disabilities that other schools may be able to. And that maybe sometimes charter schools don't actually, are not as accepting of kids with disabilities. And maybe we want to somehow make sure they don't get into the pool, right? So can you just speak bluntly about that and how you all engage and help support students with special needs?
Yes, sir. Thank you for that question. I'm very passionate about this issue because my son, who has cerebral palsy, a disability, goes to a public charter school. And as a parent of a student with special needs, I'm very passionate about our students at Chattanooga Prep. And if approved, Knoxville Prep, having those same support systems that my son would have. We look at all of our students as our kids. And you can look at the demographics of Chattanooga Prep and see that our 21% students with special needs show, and it's one of the higher ones in Chattanooga, that we accept all kids. We follow state law, the only prerequisite to come to our school that you live in Hamilton County if you're in Chat Prep, Knox County if you're in Knoxville. So on the application, when we select our kids, if first come, first served, if we have to go lottery, the fact that they have a special need is not, they, has no effect on their enrollment in our school. Instead, our team meets and says, how can we meet that child? Again, we want to meet kids at their level. For example, we have a 7th grader right now with autism. He's been kicked out of three different schools in Hamilton County. This is the first, Chattanooga Prep's the first school this young man's been in, that he's been in a school for a full year. He just made the principal's honors list, went to the principal's luncheon. His parents were excited for him and celebrating the fact that he has been in school for a full year. So our smaller class size, our three exceptional education teachers at Chat Prep that we would have at Knox Prep too, all of our services that we offer. We have a licensed counselor on staff that is trained specifically to meet the needs of autistic students. We will rise to the occasion to meet kids at their level. I'm very passionate, our organization is very passionate about all kids and not kicking kids out or cherry-picking kids just because of a disability, because I would not want that for my own son.
I said last question, I do have one more, actually. So on the parent engagement piece, that's another concern that I've had, and for the same reasons that Ms. Bike articulated. Fundamentally, I actually have never seen a parent that does not care about their kid and their education. And I work with lower-income mother-led families all day long who are going to school themselves, carrying two jobs and doing the thing, right? The reality is, some folks do not have as much opportunity to carve the pie as some others do, right? In terms of the way we leverage our time. And that's one of the concerns that I've seen, is that if the level of engagement is required to meet this bar, if that family just cannot do it, what is the consequence or the penalty of that? I'd like for you to address that, and then I'll, I'll share some perspective that I, that I gained from the parents that I spoke to there.
Absolutely. The parent engagement is a recommendation, it is not a requirement of enrollment. We require all of our parents to fill out a compact. That compact is a commitment to help your child throughout their education journey. If a parent's not coming to the school, they're not going to be removed from our school. Instead, we meet them. That van I mentioned that comes to Knoxville very often, at least once a week, it's also used by our principal and our leadership team, our dean of students, our teachers, to do home visits. So if we have students, the parents are not coming to meetings, or teacher meetings, or parent-teacher conferences, we go to them. Our principal took some of our teachers to a home to have a parent-teacher conference with a student, one of our students with disability. So we will meet the kid where he's at. And also I will add that that's where our mentor program comes into play. Our boys having their mentors, and a lot of times the mentors become like the parent in the sense that the child, the young man goes to their mentor. And we will see mentors at the parent meetings because the mentor can nudge that, that young man even further in a math class, or a science class, or a reading class. So we also utilize the mentor as well in some of those conversations. But back to your question, I love that question because parent engagement is one of our key focuses on our school. We will go to the parent wherever they're at.
So when I met with the parents that were gathered there that day by myself, I'll mention as well. One, I was really impressed with the representation among the parents. I'm not going to get into all those demographic bits, but to me, that said something. And also, when I asked them that question, the body language was amazing. Like, they all were like, what? Like, that's ridiculous. Like, we've never experienced any of that. And to me, for me, I had a little bit of relief in that because it was such a real response. Like, there was no hesitation, and their words backed it up as well. But what they said is like, no, like, if we need to do a Zoom meeting, or if we can't meet, they'll reschedule, or they'll come to us. And, I mean, so I know that is a real concern of folks in the community. And I just, I want, from what I've seen and the way I've heard you all respond, I think it's probably an unmerited concern. I do think there are probably some schools that maybe that bar is set to a level that's not reasonable. But from what I see and what I've heard from those parents, I appreciate the way that you all do navigate that. And honestly, not speaking about our specific schools at Knox County, but I think all of us should be a little bit more, give a little more attention to how we're engaging and meeting folks where they are, especially our parents, so.
And we go to them. One thing we've done this year is, parents love to go to basketball games and football games. So we'll use halftime to speak to parents because they're there. We will send out messages. To your point, we just had a T and ready parent meeting. We did one live and also on Zoom. So we're going to accommodate parents to their need. We're understanding that parents work. I work as a parent, it's hard for me to get to parent meetings. So I appreciate my child's school for offering that virtual option. So whatever we can do to get parents engaged in there, it's actually one of our goals too. So all of our parents take two surveys a year, beginning of the year and end of year survey. And we have performance goals our board has set for me and also. and end of year survey, and we have performance goals our board has set for me, and also I set for our leadership team and teachers, of satisfaction that our parents have to have in going to Chattanooga Prep. So those survey results are tied to their performance every single year. So there's, we're held accountable with goals to ensure that we're responding to our, what we call our customers, our students and our parents. We call it the Disney World approach, making sure that every detail is addressed when it comes to serving our families.
So, uh, no question, just a statement. Um, I think it's good that you all have a five-year track record. Um, you know, that's different than the first charter school that came to Knox County that had no track record. Um, and, you know, hopefully you all would be able to get up to speed sooner than somebody with no track record. So I think that's, I think that's a positive, and I think it's a good thing. Operating an organization that's done good work in the Restoration House and being asked to come into other communities as well, um, we've actually intentionally never decide, we've decided to never actually franchise in another community. What we've done is we've shared best practices, let people take it and contextualize it. It's a different approach, right? You all are franchising. I'm not making a comment about what's good or what's not in, in that approach. I will say, though, the reason we've made that decision is because what we do is so contextualized to Knoxville. I can't imagine just picking up what we do and planning it in Dallas or something, you know what I mean? And just making it happen in the way we do. So my word of encouragement to you all is, if this should move forward, continue and go even deeper than you have to engage the community who know this context.
Absolutely.
And, and keep those folks engaged. Because I fundamentally believe, no matter how good you are in Chattanooga, you cannot do it as well in Knoxville if you do not have Knoxville at the table. You just can't.
Absolutely.
So.
And we're committed to that. Uh, I know our proposed principal, our proposed leadership team, our advisory board, our governing board, I can commit to you that we will be in Knoxville. I want to sit down with Dr. Roswick and the administration and talk about goals and how we can be a tool in the toolbox. Rico Hopewell, who's on our advisory board, who many of you know, mid-house, he's excited to send his nephew to our school. Marcus Jackson with Boys and Girls Club, who's on our advisory board, that has a heart for East Knoxville and knows what students that come into the center of the Boys and Girls Club see. And I think that's going to be an asset to us, to be at the Boys and Girls Club, where there's already students there, there's already parents there, where we can hear and, and listen to their concerns. We want to be about the community, and I can assure you of that. And I love Knoxville. See my orange, go Vols. Uh, and, and being a resident here for quite some time, Knoxville is close to my heart. And Chattanooga and Knoxville, East Tennessee, that can do excellent things for kids. And one thing that's excited us about being here is Knox County schools. When I sit down with Dr. Roswick and hear the goals and seeing your graduation plans, that's us, and we want to help support that. And you have my word to do that.
All right, Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I, I know the board doesn't want to listen to me ask a lot of questions, but it's important to understand that this school is beginning in my community. And so I feel like I need to do my due diligence to ask these questions, just like we would for any other school in anyone's community. So first, I appreciate the responsiveness to information requests, even though you haven't had one from me specifically. I know that we have had some citizens who have requested information and gotten it not only faster, but they have gotten it. When asking for the same information from Knox County schools, that isn't exactly what happened. So since I know that you, you are very good at that, could you send us a list of those sixty community meetings? Because I, I've been digging through here while I'm listening, and I'm not finding it. Um, that doesn't mean it's not here. It just means that I, I have trouble listening and reading at the same time. So I do find attachment E, that is the list of all of the letters of support, but it sounds like you're talking about much more than that, like you're talking about community meetings.
Absolutely.
And when I'm talking to people in the, in, in my community, they are unaware that this is happening. So that's why I would like to see sort of where that happens to help.
Sure. I would love to.
Help me understand where that breakdown is, because I know Knox County Schools hasn't reached out to have community meetings and get input, so that we can have that kind of community input. So it would be interesting for me to see what input you have.
Yes, ma'am. You'll have it in your inbox tomorrow. I would love to share. And, uh, we have already committed and will continue to commit, if approved, we will continue to have community member meetings. That's what we love, to be in the community, talking to parents throughout this process. Uh, we, we believe, we're a school of choice. We say this every single day. So we've got to earn trust. The only way to get kids and parents to choose us is to build that trust. So that's the best way to do that, is in the community, talking to parents. So you'll have it in your inbox tomorrow.
Thank you. And I know I will, because that's how quickly you responded previously.
Yes, and we're open book. Please keep it coming. We, we want to be very transparent. A lot of this, we post online. I know there's a question earlier about our board meetings. All of our board meetings are on Zoom. We have public participation. We give week notices. We have a board retreat coming up. Is the public notice already there? Y'all are welcome to attend. So, uh, we're, we're as open book as, as we can get. And if, if at any point there needs to be more transparency, or you need information, tell us. We'll get it to you. I promise.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And I, I absolutely believe it. Um, so I, I of course have some other questions regarding your location, your current location and/or where you may be looking at to build. Um, on page twelve of the three hundred seventy-seven, it says that you will work to bring in kids that are leaving their attendance zone. So if they are already leaving their attendance zone, that implies to me that our transfer process is working for them, that they are going to a school that they have chosen. So if we are looking at another school to pull those students, uh, that's a why that I have. Why are we looking for those students who are already finding a choice?
Yeah. So if approved in November, uh, the state sets the application period of when all public charter schools across the state can open their applications. At that point, as soon as our application goes alive, any student in Knox County can apply to our school. Um, and so in terms of identifying students that are leaving their attendance zone, uh, from what region, we really can't control that if they apply. However, we can control our marketing, and we've done that over the last year. Uh, very due diligent in terms of our, uh, if approved, our website, where we've gained public information. We've also received letters of intent from over seventy-five families who have already filled out letters of intent for Knoxville Prep. And I will tell you, looking at the region of those families, they're coming from all over Knoxville, everyone in your district. Each district represented here has at least one student who has filled out a letter of interest. Uh, so they're coming from all over, and we really can't control who applies. We control our marketing, where we really tailor and market to, um, the underrepresented students and families. For example, at Chattanooga Prep, and we'll do this for Knoxville Prep too, we have translators, uh, that go to our community meetings in the event that Spanish-speaking families need help filling out the application. Uh, so in terms of a target of, of leaving an attendance zone, it's not really feasible for us to have, filter those students when we have to be open for all Knox County's kids.
Okay. Then based on that, how can you, how can you achieve your goal of reaching those students who are potentially in a poverty situation or underachieving? How do you ensure that, if it's just wide open?
Sure. Uh, and, and a good example is Chattanooga Prep. I'm not familiar if you're with, familiar with the Chattanooga region, but we're in Highland Park. Uh, we have students that come from all over Hamilton County. The same will be in Knox County. But the only thing we can control in that is, is how we market and who we're marketing to. So we will be very strategic in our marketing, uh, community events that we have, application events that we have, to ensure that our applications and our marketing is geared towards those that are underrepresented, under economically performing, uh, that, that look for choice in their education.
Okay. So along that same line, when we're looking at the area where you're beginning, we're looking between two fairly high-income neighborhoods, um, high housing values. If we're looking at Old North Knox, that is, um, a neighborhood that has had quite a lot of, of improvement over years, as has Fourth and Gill. So it concerns me that right in the center there is, doesn't seem to be the target demographic. But also, if, if we are going to add a choice, I'm concerned about why we're adding it within one point six miles of Emerald, within a short distance of Beaumont Magnet, within a short distance of Ellinan STEM Academy. Why, why there, where we already have similar choices?
Sure. Great question, and I'm happy to answer. So very similar in Chattanooga, Highland Park, very few of our students live within the neighborhood of our school. Again, they come from all over. If you look at the houses around Chattanooga Prep, they're four hundred, five hundred thousand dollars. That area is really, uh, developed. Uh, the same will be true here in Knoxville, to where we use buses and bus stops, and we, uh, any of our students that need transportation throughout Knox County, we're going to provide that. For example, at Chattanooga Prep, we go all the way out to Hickson, Utawa, um, to, to bring students in. And, and also in terms of other charters being nearby, uh, in Chattanooga, all the charter schools are within four blocks of each other. So we really don't overlap with each other. We actually help each other. Uh, just the other day, I received a call from a charter school down the street that, uh, needed a, a, a science teacher, and asked if we had any exceptional science teachers that applied for our positions that we might share with them, and we did. Uh, so charters being together can actually work together for the better of the community. And, and there's enough students that are looking for choice, enough families to serve, uh, that, uh, all schools will benefit from. I will also add, we have high school. Emerald goes to eighth grade currently at the moment. So that's something we've talked to them about, about potentially supporting their eighth grade students, having a choice going on into high school. Uh, so we would collaborate with all schools, not just charter schools, but all schools, and how we can best support families and, and ensure that we're not overstepping. Uh, we're not here to cause harm. We're here to, because parents have called us, community members have called us, uh, to, to rise to the occasion and do more if you want to, uh, offer a high-quality school choice for, for young men here in Knoxville.
Okay. I just have a couple more questions, and they're pretty quick. Um, someone, I don't remember who was talking about ACT scores, and said that you expect that ACT scores will be in the twenties. Have there been any ACTs taken to date, or is that a future?
We have. How many of y'all have taken your ACT? I know Teo had to have his ACT to get accepted into Brown. Our school goal is a twenty-one. Uh, right now, with sophomores, our average is an eighteen with sophomores, which is already above the community average for Hamilton County. We start ACT prep starting in sixth grade. All of our sixth graders take to practice ACT. We practice with Sylvan, uh, to provide that ACT practice and, and test, practice tests. So students are exposed. ACT is about exposure, just like anything else. Our younger, you, uh, learn to swim, the better swimmer you're going to be. So the earlier you get to know the ACT, uh, the better you're going to do on the ACT. And our sixth graders, seventh graders, eighth graders especially, are very excited to take the ACT every year. They take selfies with ACT tests and just a lot more excited than I was to take the ACT, uh, growing up. So we build that culture and excitement, uh, for our school. And ACT is one of our big college prep goals, because we know, uh, there's a Teo here in Knoxville, uh, that wants to go to a Browns pre-college program, and he can't do it unless he has that ACT score.
Okay. Um, along those same lines, I've totally forgotten that question. Uh, maybe I'll come back to it. Okay. So did you say that in Hamilton County, there was already an all-girls school before this one? And was it a, on a Hamilton County school? Okay.
There is an all-girls public charter school, CGLA, Chattanooga Girls Leadership Academy, that was, uh, it, it's been in existence since two thousand twelve. Their founder's Sue Ann Wells, uh, their CEO, Dr. Elaine Swafford, was the founding CEO for Chattanooga Prep. Uh, Sue Ann Wells, that's the founder of the girls' school, is also on our governing board. Uh, so a lot of their, uh, vision, a lot of their foundations or our foundations as well, in terms of being able to really tailor all single gender model to meet the needs for kids.
I see. So you didn't have to deal with any kind of, of Title IX challenges for having an offering that was only for boys and not having something else. So in Knox County, we don't have an all-girls school of any kind right now. So beginning an all-boys school, as, on day one, we will have something for boys that we do not have for girls. So when that Title IX challenge happens, and I think we all know that it will, when that Title IX challenge happens, what kind of plan do you have in place for that?
We're prepared. So Chris McCarty, who a lot of you know as our, our legal counsel, happens to be from Knoxville, he was before even we thought about Knoxville Prep. Uh, Mr. McCarty is, is expert on Tennessee law, and actually was referred to us by the Tennessee Department of Education. And he has already been advising us, we've gotten ahead of this, to where, uh, we know that public charter schools, public traditional schools here in Tennessee are still allowed to have single gender models, offer single gender models for kids. Uh, so at this time, we would not be in a Title IX violation, according to our legal counsel. Uh, and we, you know, we're going to abide by what the law says and resort to, uh, Mr. McCarty on our legal, uh, representation.
I, I would agree with Tennessee law, absolutely. Tennessee law says that we can have single-sex schools. That's, that's not really the issue. My question is really the, the disparity when we create a school that is only boys, because there are federal guidelines that we have to offer the same for girls. Just like if we have a baseball facility and a softball facility, they have to be comparable. So if we have a boys' school and nothing, then that seems to me like that would be an issue beyond Tennessee law saying, hey, it's okay. Because yeah, it's okay to have single-sex schools, but federal law tells us that it's not okay to have something for boys and not for girls.
We've been advised by our legal counsel that we are in accordance even federal law. Um, and I will say, um, that we, we have very close contact. I know Sir Drake Plur has been in contact with our attorney as well, uh, on our stance on this. I will speak for him, but, uh, I will say that according to our legal counsel, according to the, the law as it exists, we're in accordance, uh, to both federal and state law. And, and we have said in our charter application, once we, uh, build the trust of the community, we show those exceptional results, uh, and if the community demands an all-girls school, we would love to present that, uh, to you all, uh, after, uh, the boys' school is established, if that's something the community desires.
Thank you. And I, I think you, what you said just now is actually what I'm getting at. You would be in line with the law, but as the authorizer, we may not be in line with the federal law. So I think that is something we need to explore at some point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Bike?
Thank you. Um, just to tap in on the marketing, just a statement. Um, I understand that you all have engaged Ackerman PR, and I really, again, appreciate all of your answers today via email that were very last minute and very prompt. Um, but certainly when they reached out to me and I asked only a few of the questions that I asked you today, I was called combative. So that was not exciting. Um, but to go on to my question, how would you all handle it if a student applies to your school, is a boy, but was assigned a female at birth?
We would follow this, uh, current law. We've, we've, as I said, we consulted with our attorney on this, this question. We have followed the current law and consider every case by case, uh, as it comes to us.
So would you admit that student, or would that be something that would disqualify them?
We would take it case by case, uh, for our school and our mission.
And even the opposite way? Let's say you have a boy who's assigned male at birth, decides to transition or identify as a female. That's just a case by case situation?
We would take it case by case as it comes to us, uh, in accordance with our legal counsel.
Um, has your legal counsel made any statements on that?
He has, and I'll, I will be glad to forward you, uh, the exact stance he has on that in, in recommendation to us. I know he, uh, sent to Mr. Plur, but I will be more than happy to send it and provide it to the board.
Yeah, that would be great, because I think that that could ping off of some of the stuff of us as an authorizer, what goes in there.
You'll have it in your inbox by twelve o'clock.
Thank you.
If not sooner.
Again, I, I appreciate your promptness. Um, and I have two more short questions. Um, so I understand that your principal or proposed principal is not from Knoxville? Is that true?
That's correct. He is not from Knoxville, but our proposed assistant principal is.
Okay. Who is that?
Brian Mann.
And how did you choose that?
He is an exceptional teacher and leader at Chattanooga Prep. He was actually Tennessee Teacher of the Year two years ago. I would invite you to our school to see his classroom. He's one of our founding teachers. You'll see a lot of excitement and, and joy in his class, and he's going through a leadership program and has signed up to do our residency leadership program a full year before the school launches. Uh, so we did interviews... So, we did interviews. We looked at qualifications for both the proposed principal and assistant principal. And out of the 10 candidates we interviewed, both Chattanooga Prep leadership, but also our local advisory board met with them. Parents met with them. They had metrics, they had role plays. They had to do a very extensive process and commit to a year of development through Relay Graduate School of Education and commit to move here to Knoxville. That's how those, the two proposed leaders were selected. But the main thing was based on their academic results because we know that the academic outcomes of our students are our number-one priority. And both our proposed leaders have a tremendous track history of providing excellent academic results for students. If you ask any of our students here who their favorite teachers are and leaders are at Chattanooga Prep, probably above me, it will be Mr. Mann and Mr. Howard. And we're putting our finest in Knoxville because we want to meet those expectations. We want to ensure that we're held accountable. And we're going to put our best feet forward here for the students and families here in Knoxville. And we believe our success at Chattanooga Prep can only be replicated through taking folks within that know our model, know our vision, know our mission, have those results to be able to go out and expand, just like a business would. Like Starbucks, when they, when they expand, they take their best talent and put them in the new city. And that's what we're doing because we want our Starbucks coffee in Knoxville to take the exact same way as in Chattanooga. And for that, it's our academic outcomes and results we get for kids.
Last question, I promise. So, Representative Sam McKenzie, who's come and spoke to us, he made a statement that I think we've all read. And I'm curious if you have reached out to him or if you've had any meetings with him or if you plan to do that?
We have reached out to Representative McKenzie and would invite him and anyone else in the community, on the board, leadership positions of any area of Knoxville to Chattanooga Prep to see, I know members of our board. And leadership has reached out to Representative McKenzie to meet as well. I'm willing to meet with Representative McKenzie. We have utmost respect for him and his leadership and the things he's done in Nashville or represent his constituents. So, would love the opportunity to meet with he or any members of the community.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Deport, did you want to weigh in?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to echo what Mr. Scott's saying in that I have had correspondence with their counsel, Chris McCarty. And I know, I know Chris pretty well, like Chris. And he did send me some language, you know, around Title IX. There is an exception under Title IX. It's under 34 CFR 106, if anybody wants to look at that. And, you know, the language is in the report from the charter school application team. So, you can email if you want to, but it's already in there.
You'll have it in your inbox by noon tomorrow.
Thank you. These guys are looking really hungry over here.
Hey, I owe them dinner. Any suggestions? We can go on the way home.
Ms. Allen, did you have something else?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Be very short. I just wanted, since Ms. Pike mentioned being combative, I just wanted to let you know that this is, this is our normal questioning. This isn't more than usual. It's actually probably a little light. So, just for you to be aware of that.
And I will say, please continue the questions. If you have questions past this meeting, please email me, call me. I'll send out my phone number, my cell number. Please, please reach out with any additional questions. I'm more than happy to answer them and appreciate this opportunity. It's been an honor to meet everyone, be here in Knoxville and hear from community members and have the potential opportunity to serve.
Thank you. All right. So, any more questions, discussion, comments?
So, moving on to public forum. But before I do, like I said, we have several of our young men from Knox Prep here to speak. And of course, I am assuming they are not Knox County residents. So, without strong objection, my recommendation would be to let them speak. They have sat here patiently through this whole meeting unless someone is strongly opposed to it. Well, Sa will make that motion.
Second.
Okay, Sa.
Can we also let them go exact, yeah? Is that okay? Okay.
You're done with that second? Okay, so, we will, we will make a motion to let our students from Knox Prep speak at the beginning of public forum. We have a motion in a second. Chattanooga Prep, I'm sorry. It's been a long night. A motion in a second. So, all in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
First, we have Erin Webb. Erin, hello, welcome.
Obviously, I'm not a student from Chattanooga Prep. However, if I could just take just a couple of minutes to address this group, I would appreciate it. I am a board member of Chattanooga Prep today, and I would be part of the leadership team of the Prep Public School System, should you vote to allow it. Mr. Watson asked me a question earlier about my why. Why am I a part of Chattanooga Prep? And the answer is pretty simple for me. When you look at these young men over here and you think about where society is today and you think about what schools are doing and attempting to do, we see Chattanooga Prep and hopefully Knox Prep as an additional tool in the toolbox to raise some outstanding, well-spoken, well, just positioned young men across the community to make a difference. I was from one of those economically underprivileged areas during my childhood. And I wish there had been a place like Chat Prep for me. I eventually went on to go to law school. I went right here in Knoxville. And I know several of the people who are here today. I went to church with some folks here. We know some of the same pastors. I tutored at Austin East English while I was in law school. And I see some of the disparities that can occur from, from the educational standpoint. At Chat Prep and at Knox Prep, we're not looking to compete with the school system here. We're looking to augment the school system here. We're looking to create some of the brightest, most talented, most successful community members, not just in Chattanooga and Knoxville, but across the country. When you see these young men over here, these are future presidents, future business leaders, future entrepreneurs. And they deserve the right to have an additional tool in the toolbox of how they learn. And I can't wait for you to hear from some of these young men, and hopefully, they will get a chance to speak. But my why, Mr. Watson, is because I see myself in these young men. I see what potential they have. And you asked a question about the white saviorism. Here's what I would say to that. Color should not matter when it comes to educating our children. We've talked a lot about process here today and about whether you're for or against charter schools. At the end of the day, it's about these young men right here and their counterparts in Knoxville. So, I would just say, as a board member of Chat Prep and a future board member of the Knox Prep system, whether you are for charter schools or not, give these young men in Knox County an opportunity to benefit the same way these young men in Chattanooga have. And I guarantee you, you'll be proud of the decision down the road. So, that's all I have to say. And thank you for allowing a non-current Knox County to speak.
Thank you, sir. Next up, we have Theo. Welcome. Just state your name and county of residence. You have three minutes.
All right. My name is Teo. It's all right if you pronounce it wrong. I'm in a, I'm a sophomore at Chat Prep. I enjoy attending Chat Prep a lot. I come from a low-middle-class family, an illiterate mother, and my father can speak Spanish and English, read, write, and all of that. This school offers me an opportunity, like Mrs. Scott bragged about me. I got accepted to Brown pre-college program. And my mentor, who I've known since 6th grade, we still talk today and we talk about various topics, personal, academic. And without my mentor, I wouldn't have someone right next to me to talk to about something. And for my first years attending Chat Prep, I attended ESOL as Spanish was my first language and English is my second. And all of this was provided by Chat Prep. And I just hope that we continue this over to Knoxville as many kids here don't have such an opportunity. And if we grant them the opportunity by opening Knox Prep, that would be the same feeling as I did when I was like in 6th grade to now. Also, this school also gives us AP classes. They offer that mini electives like AP Psychology for probably next year. Right now, I'm taking APU as History. Last year, I did AP Human Geography, which I did score a five on it. And I was pretty happy about it. I had a little less confidence on me. I thought I was going to score a three, but because of the school giving me confidence to push a little harder, I scored a five on it. And I hope to score a four or a five on APU since that's not my best subject ever, but no. But I hope we can continue that over to Knox and give kids here an opportunity like they gave us at Chattanooga. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, and congratulations. You'll have to report back in and let us know how it goes this summer.
Thank you.
Thank you. Trey, you're up next. I have an 8th grade son, and so, this handwriting looks familiar to me. So, I apologize if I butcher some names. Welcome.
Well, my name is Trevion Tucker. I'm an 8th grade student at Chattanooga Prep. You know, at Chat Prep, I feel, I feel, I feel welcome. I feel like I belong there. I feel, you know, they give us so many, like, emotional support. Like, I can go to a teacher and I can talk to them about something. And they give me that, you know, support like their family. And around, at Chat Prep, the culture, we have a brotherhood. And so, as that, I call these my brothers, you know. Through thick and thin, we stick together. And Chat Prep provides me with many opportunities that, you know, that can help me later on in life. I just received a scholarship from the Ben Carson's Fund. And so, I just want kids from Knox Prep to, to, to have the opportunities that I have, you know, to thrive in life. And, yeah, like, what Mr. Scott and Mr. and Mrs. Allen is doing for us is amazing. You know, it's helped me a lot. And the mentorship that they provide for us. I still have my mentor that I've had since the 6th grade. And he's helped me to go through life and grow as a person. And, yeah, yeah. Chat Prep, they let me project my voice that I, that I, that I have in my, I can project my opinion to also help other, other kids, you know, in different places. So, yeah.
Thank you. Next up, we've got Cory. Hey, buddy, welcome. If you just want to say your name and where you live?
My name is Cory. And I live in Chattanooga. I think that the reason we should have, um, what's the thing called again? Knoxville Prep because Chat Prep gave us a lot of opportunities to do better and do more stuff. Like, they gave me more opportunities and stuff. Then, now, just what Trey said, they give us, let us spread out emotions more. And they, yeah, they have tutoring for us if we're struggling with our work and stuff. Then, that home helped me, helped me a lot with my, um, work and stuff. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. Great job. Cash, welcome, Cash.
Hello, thank you for having me here.
Thanks for being here.
All right, well, my name is Cash and I am from Chattanooga. I mean, there are only so many things I can say about Chat Prep. It's wonderful. It has given me the opportunity to develop a friendship for people that I'm probably going to be friends with for another 10, 20 years that I may have never had at another school. I was maybe very, very shy. I didn't have a lot of friends until I came here. And then I gained one, two, three, four, five. I have, I'm still friends with them. We laugh, we have fun, we play, we do work. And there's a lot of the work. So, it helps to have them, helps to have them around. And it helps, Chat Prep has helped me develop skills that I don't think other schools may offer. I didn't like talking in front of large crowds like this. But since I've gone here, well, that has obviously changed. And I'm happy it did because I may not have been standing here talking to every one of you. It has given me an opportunity to, well, sorry. It has shown me that I have a lot, a lot of options for a career, for a college, just for life. And that's what I love most about this school is that if I keep doing my hardest, keep doing my work, keep listening, pay attention, pay attention, being more involved with school, I could be whatever I want to be. I can go to any college I want to. I can meet a lot of people, a lot of great, intelligent men and women. And I think that's a wonderful thing. And I know that when that day comes, I still have all my friends from Chat Prep that'll just walk with me, say, hey, Cash, keep going, keep pushing yourself. And I absolutely love it. I mean, they're not here right now, but if they were, they'd be probably hiding their faces. They're very shy. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Trevion, did I say that right? Oh, welcome. How are you? Good. Just state your name and where you live, and you have three minutes.
My name is Trevion. I live in Chattanooga, Tennessee, and I am in the 9th grade. And my experience at Chat Prep is very good because a lot of people do not get the experience at Chat Prep or at any school. So, me being at Chat Prep, it helped me a lot because at my other school, my teachers really didn't care about me or helped me a lot on my work. And when I came to Chat Prep, it helped me a lot. And I started doing better in school. And I went to tutor. I had a mentor who actually cared about me. And I started getting all my work done and improvement in class. And I even had some administrators to help me while I was there. And they keep pushing me to be the best that I can. So, now, I work for the school, basically. I be there at all the events. I help set up for meetings. And I absolutely love the teachers, love the employees, love my classmates. And they help me be the best I can. And every time when I'm done, I always have people to come and talk to. And they help me, and they help me in class. Because not at, like, every school in Chattanooga, they don't do that. They don't show as much love that Chat Prep do. So, I think if we created a school in Knoxville, it would be better. And they would actually show love to people in Chattanooga, Tennessee, and throughout the whole country of Tennessee. And that's all I got to say.
Thanks. Thanks for being here. I think, did I get to all of y'all who wanted to speak? I think that covered everybody on the list, but I just wanted to double-check. Well, thank you, boys, for being here. I know this is your spring break and this is how you chose to spend your spring break. So, thank you so much for being here and speaking. And hopefully, you enjoy the rest of your night and get some dinner. Thanks for being here. So, we'll move on. I'll start back up to the top of the list. David Krebs. Welcome. Just say your name, county of residence, and you have three minutes.
Hi, I'm David Krebs. I live at 2661 Sheridan Road. I'm a KCS science teacher. I'm up here to share my experience as a charter school teacher. I've taught in New York and Georgia and Atlanta as a charter school teacher. I've taught in New York and Georgia and Atlanta as a charter school teacher. Uh, prior to stepping up here today, I also called two friends that still work at charter schools to see how it was going. In my experience as a teacher, what stands out in terms of a good school are three pillars: culture, community involvement, and consistency. Something that has been lacking in all of the four schools that I'm, have a connection to, is consistency. And I guess in addition to those three pillars, there's a fourth, and that's experienced teachers. And those two things, consistency and experienced teachers, are not very prevalent at the schools I have experienced, and that's, that's my experience. In addition to this, um, some of the things that I found challenging in my experience was uh, the lack of facilities. Um, it seems like this culture of, or this charter school rollout seems like an experiment, right? And so the facilities that I have worked at, at a charter school, one was, um, an old Atlanta Public School building, the other one was a church. Um, and so this facility lacked, uh, science classroom, it was carpeted. Uh, the students had, uh, physical education in the cafeteria. Among other things I've, I've experienced is a level of disorganization. I like to take my students out of the classroom and I found that in Atlanta specifically, uh, the administration was new. And they didn't know the protocols for what I needed paperwork-wise, and so a lot of that fell onto myself. And I'm all for teacher autonomy, but I find at KCS, I'm provided that teacher autonomy. And I don't think I'd, I'm alone when, um, I say that I value, uh, procedure and some bureaucracy. There needs to be some, some, some organized steps to, um, you know, take these, these journeys out of, and adventures that pertain to education pathways. What else? I, I would also like to note that, um, some things in my experience and my friends' experiences are charter schools provide really great stellar wraparound services that lack in traditional public schools. And a lot of this has to do with finances. And I'd like to note that, you know, Tennessee ranks as a forty-fifth in the nation per student in funding, which is extremely low. And I wonder if, um, if we didn't rank so low, if we'd have more money for some of these wraparound services. And to name a few, um, some of the wraparound services that I'm familiar with, that schools serve, involve weekly therapy and tutoring after school.
That's the end of the three minutes. Thank you. Angela Patrick? Angela? Hello, just state your name, county of residence, in three minutes.
Angela Patrick, Knox County. I'm reading a statement on behalf of Paula Hancock, President of the Knox County Education Association. Only our local school board is in the position to, to determine what kind of school is needed and where it is needed to enhance student learning and performance in this district. As you look for alternatives to neighborhood and community schools that already suffer from a lack of resources, the interest of the Knox County Education Association is for all of our students to succeed regardless of where they live. Many of our students are being denied opportunities because their school and communities are underfunded and under-resourced. We believe that our traditional public schools should be fully funded to give all students the opportunity they need to succeed. Chronic underfunding has been plagued Tennessee's traditional public schools for decades. Traditional public schools have proven themselves to outperform other education alternatives. We must fully fund our traditional public schools so that all our students have the educators they need, one-on-one attention, inviting classrooms, and a well-rounded curriculum. In Knoxville, the state is a minority funder in education. Local taxpayers pay for our schools. Research, research informs us that charter schools are publicly funded but privately run. They receive public funding, including local, state, and federal tax dollars. However, they choose their own management structure and do not have the traditional elected school board that is common to all traditional public schools in this country. As a result, our district could find itself in a financial situation that could jeopardize our school district's ability to deliver on the promise to provide a free and appropriate public education. Our district will be hard-pressed to deliver adequate and equitable educational opportunities to fully meet our students' needs. We can't, cannot allow the polarization of this decision to potentially harm our student body and to lead further dissension in education. Let us come together to create a plan that will provide options to our children and adequate funding to our schools. Collaborative efforts with the community, KCS Board of Education, and the Knox County Education Association will garner a sustainable future in education. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeffrey Talman? Welcome. Just state your name, county of residence, and you have three minutes.
Jeff Talman. I reside at six-one-six Luttrell Street in the Fourth and Gill neighborhood, so to your point, here's a voice from the neighborhood. My Rotary Club, I'm a Rotarian and, uh, but I'm not speaking on behalf of the Rotary. And actually, I'm not speaking, this is, these are my own words, my own voice, not speaking uh, for the Knox Preparatory School, though I am supportive. My Rotary Club has a partnership with Sarah Moore Green for twenty years where we take books and read to second and third graders. We just outfitted the Vine Middle School soccer team. Uh, we just, uh, had a Rotary grant to help, uh, support the Austin East robotics team that just performed this past weekend. I pay attention to education and as, as a son of a public school teacher, I pay attention basically to how all of us as a community, how we unlock our human capacity, our human potential. So when I first heard of Knoxville Preparatory School interest in Knoxville, I reached out and said, uh, come, come to Knoxville. We wanna hear about it. My Rotary Club's involved with public education. We wanna hear what you're doing. There might be some good things to learn. So, uh, Brad came up and, uh, uh, I was impressed then and I've been impressed more every, every day. You know, one of the things, uh, is, as you get older, uh, at least I appreciate the things that sometimes make the difference are discipline, respect, and manners. Discipline, respect, and manners. It's not real complicated. And I can tell you, every interaction I've seen from everybody at Chattanooga Preparatory School has been consistent in terms of their regard for their fellows, the community, they're happy warriors, they're good people. I reached out to one of your award-winning middle school teachers who I'll not name because I know what the repercussions will be. And I said, what do you think about this? She said, we are failing that cohort. We need it desperately. We are failing that cohort. That's one of your, that's one of your best and brightest school principals speaking on behalf of the urgency and the need for bringing this committed group of people to Knoxville. The, um, I live, like I say, nearby. I've been involved with Center City business for a long time. I was on the Empowerment Zone Board several years ago. It's important to know, I, uh, Mr. Watson, you raised the question of white saviorism. The, the interesting thing about Knoxville's urban poor is it's sixty percent white. And I'm not carrying water for white people. In fact, I'm of just the opposite view. We need partnership with our neighbors. And, and I know that there's, uh, an inclination sometimes in the community to make...
Thank you, sir. Next, Travis Donahoe. Travis, welcome. Just state your name, county of residence, and you have three minutes, sir.
My name is Travis Donahoe. I reside at eighty-one twenty-seven Cornell Lane in the halls. I'm retired, but I worked in the field of K through twelve in higher education for more than twenty years. Although my wife Sandy and I do not have children, we freely and gladly pay taxes to support public education. But not to support private schools like the one being considered by the board this week. The term "public charter school" is a total misnomer. Call them what you want, Chattanooga, Chattanooga Prep and Chat Prep doing business as Knox Prep are and will be forever private schools. They were founded by multimillionaires. They are privately owned. Their controlling board is privately named. And if you approve its application this week, you will have no control over Knox Prep. You will be ceding your responsibility to an outside entity, prep public schools located more than one hundred miles away. As a taxpayer and a lifelong supporter of public, not private, education, I expect the governing body of an institution that I fund with my taxes to have full control over its affiliated bodies. I expect them to be controlled in Knox County by Knox County residents. Please reject Knox Prep's application. Please remain conscientious stewards of our tax baller, tax dollars. Don't fund what you do not control.
Thank you. Kim Kretich? Welcome.
Hi, Kim Kretich, Knox County. I am the parent of three boys who went to Vine Middle Magnet. And I feel very proud of, uh, what, I, I, we loved Vine. In fact, Ms. Hancock, whose words you read, was one of, uh, the boys' teachers. One of our sons, now I've got twenty-four, twenty-four-year-old twins and an almost twenty-two-year-old, so I am out. One of the twins has autism and he was the, one of the very few students with a pervasive disability to have the placement, inclusive placement with an aide. If he had gone into the placement with, uh, that Knox County kept saying over and over, he should have been, which was in a segregated CDC program, he would not have been able to go to Vine. I had that confirmed because they would have said, we don't have the program to meet his needs. And I have to wonder, after talking with Brad, who answered a lot of my questions, he said, no, we would create any program, we would include students on modified content and A C T courses, we would modify their content. I'm thinking, now, how is that? We wanted to go to a Magnet school and we would not have been able to do that because of our son's placement, and yet the, Chattanooga Prep is saying, yes, anybody can. Well, Emerald Academy, to my knowledge, and I did ask around, and to my knowledge, doesn't have a single student on alternate assessment, which is basically intensely modified content. So wondering about that. And I, you know, I look at you all, students, and I see, I, I, I see my sons and their classmates. And I also think, every time I heard you speak your wonderful words of praise for your school, well, Vine did that for my sons and a lot of other people. Why, what's missing? Why can't we replicate that? Vine was only three hundred and fifty-one students back in two thousand thirteen. Hundred and eighteen of them were out of zone. Only thirty-three were Magnet. And the rest of them, or almost the rest of them, were sent there instead of alternative schools. So we really need to look at whether this is approved or not. Let's take a look at what we're, what we're doing well and what we can do better. And why can't we have Vine just as successful as a charter school purports to be? You know, David and Goliath, everybody thinks Goliath is the strong one and David was the underdog. Read Malcolm Gladwell's David and Goliath and you'll see that a school like this, yes, with private money and everything, they're very nimble. And we feel like the big giant kind of stuck sometimes. So I support Knox County schools a hundred percent and I think this gives us some perspective.
Thank you. Paul DeLeon? DeLeon. Sorry about that. It's been a long meeting.
Yeah, I'm Paul DeLeon, uh, six-three-zero Watauga Avenue, Knoxville. I'm a retired Knox County school teacher, but when I was a kid, I went to private schools. The staff meant well, but it was strictly amateur hour. They didn't know half what public school teachers bring to their first year now. And the all-boys prep school I attended, I have to say, it was bizarre. You don't have to attend one of these places to have an idea what kind of culture develops when girls and women are forbidden. The idea that boys learn very differently, that they're somehow more mathematical, sports-oriented, or rational in the girls, is based more on gender stereotypes than biology. And the implication that the sight of a stray hair across a girl's student's forehead will irresistibly distract the poor, horn-worn, maddened boys is downright insulting. Why would we take from boys the chance to develop key social skills by working daily and respectfully with girls? The justification for charter schools is innovation, not a throwback to medieval values. My old prep school wised up and started admitting girls decades ago. And leave us not forget, when we segregate students, we can call it separate but equal, but it almost never is. Let me address the slogan of parental choice. Freedom of choice is very important, except where it cuts down choice for the rest of us. KCS families already have an array of options: Magnet Schools, academies, AP classes, the STEM school, and I don't know it all. If we had more money, we'd have more options in-house. But when you subsidize charter schools, it really is, it's really the charters that have the choice because they have many ways to get rid of expensive or low-scoring students. Unlike charter schools, Knox County schools can't outsource services to students with special needs and cannot focus mainly on kids on the college track. KCS must serve tens of thousands, uh, not just a few hundred. Yet approving this application will be taking resources from already underfunded public schools. Which programs are you gonna cut in order to pay charter companies? However you do it, I know the students in our neighborhood schools will have no say in the matter. Sure, parents have every right to send their kids to private schools. Let them do it on their own dime rather than taking taxpayer subsidies. Finally, I ask, what is the end game here? Will you keep approving charters until all that's left of KCS are their students the charters don't want and whatever budget is left over? How many neighborhood schools we have to, will you have to close? Our school board has a choice and the path you choose now will determine what will be left of Knox Public Schools in ten and twenty years. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Emily Harless?
Hello.
Just state your name, county of residence, in three minutes.
Yes, Emily Harless, Knox County. I am a Knox County school parent, but I'm here today as a representative of Shades of Development After School Programs. And we currently serve pre-K through eighth-grade students, um, after-school in ten Knox County school locations. We began serving the families of Karnes Elementary School in two thousand nine, where we currently serve one hundred and six pre-K through eighth-grade students in the Karnes Annex Building between the hours of one and six P M. We also offer full-day summer camp at Karnes from seven to six P M. We truly value Karnes Elementary School and the Karnes community. After-school programming is key for many working families in the Karnes community as it provides students with a safe space to learn and grow while providing families with peace of mind. We understand the need for additional pre-K classrooms and we are eager to expand pre-K's after-school services to those students. We've been truly blessed to have dedicated space in the Karnes Annex Building for the past fourteen years. Currently, we utilize the quad in Building B and two classrooms in Building A. We understand the need to be flexible when working in a shared space environment and we have years of experience and insight to guide problem-solving, problem-solving strategies. As a licensed after-school program, we are mandated to meet certain standards related to sa- safety and space. Although we can function without dedicated space, if a portion of our program needs to transition to shared space, we do need dedicated space appropriate for providing after-school programming to the amount of students we currently serve. As decisions are made about the separation of Karnes Elementary and Karnes Preschool, our hope is that Shades can have a voice throughout that transition process. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming. Lance? Still back there?
I'm Lance McCold, Knox County. You know, I have to say that, um, I have been impressed by what I've heard from Knox, or Chattanooga Prep, Mr. Scott, and all the, the services that they provide. Their intentions are awesome. And I'm certainly impressed with the, the fine young men they have brought here. You know, they talk about helping the community, collaborating mentors, internships, and they would like to see... and they would like to see Knox Prep be part of the toolbox. The thing that bothers me is they want to set up a school that will have, if everything they say is true, exceptional resources that far exceed what Knox County can provide. And so maybe they will be able to serve 100 sixth graders every year, but there's thousands who don't have access to these resources. They tell us that they are absolutely not going to be cherry-picking. Okay. But still, there's going to be many, many students who are every bit as deserving as these fine young men of the same kind of services that Knox County cannot afford, but somehow or other Chattanooga Prep thinks that Knox Prep can do. So if they can actually afford to do all these things that they say to do, why build a school? Why not invest those resources in all of our schools that need it right now? That's what, if they, if, I mean, I have to say, if they really cared about the students, the way they should show that is by supporting all of our students, all of Knox County students, all of them, the ones in Vine and Whittle Springs, Bearden, on all those schools, support them instead of just trying to select 100 that is going to be people that they can do something special with. Every bound of our kids deserve every, the same things that they're offering to these kids. And so my request to you is, say no to this application, but turn around and say, "Mr. Scott, Mr. and Mrs. Ailing, come, help us, but help us do what we need," instead of trying to do it your way, instead of coming in and plopping down your solution that will only help 100 kids a year. Thank you.
Thank you. Candace. Welcome.
Hi, Candace Fannister, Knox County resident. I'm going to try to talk fast because I was very impressed with tonight's questions, very impressed with all the information gathered. I have two pages, and you can see there have been some edits along the way. And I'm still going to have to kind of go with a message, and then I may email all of you tomorrow after I've got a little more time to reflect. I enjoy attending meetings because I always learn something I didn't already know. On March 1st, I attended the Charter Committee meeting with Knox Prep at Sarah Simpson, and I learned a couple of things I'd like to share with you. Of course, this group is excited and enthusiastic about their mission, and they have some good ideas. But I also heard more than once that they will be leaning into the district for some special services. They want to be part of Knox County schools. Their admin will attend the other admin meetings and desires to be mentored by your admin. Knox Prep will be leaning into Knox County for special services that weren't really specified, but being a retired teacher, I'm thinking, I don't know, speech, OTPT, Sped Services ELL. You all have had a tough time covering these positions in Sped this last year. In fact, some are still vacant. If you authorize this school, you'll have to meet their needs for these special services as well as your own. They'll reach out to our Assistant Superintendent of Student Supports for guidance, our Legal Department for legal counsel perhaps, and our Finance Department for some budget information. They will use your staff to do their work. If you authorize this school, it isn't a short-term commitment. It's a ten-year commitment to share your resources and revenue. Right now, money's pretty good. We've got ESER. But your resources, your employees, maybe are not quite as plentiful. This leaning in to use your services will put more stress on your people. We have a lot of vacancies. Throughout Knox Prep's presentation to the Charter Committee, they focused on what they would bring to Knox County, so much so that no one in the room could even stop to think about what they might be subtracting from Knox County schools. I feel authorizing this school will come at a cost to all of the 91 Knox County schools across the county. On March 10th, I attended the follow-up meeting to put the recommendation together. In both meetings, I heard lots of questions from the people on the Knox County Charter Committee. They were told over and over by the consultant that they didn't have to know how it would be done, but it's in the plan. For example, Knox Prep said that they'll be fully staffed when they get here, given with the issues that every employer, including KCS, has had since, with hiring since pandemic. It's a fair question. But instead of being able to dig into it, we were just told there's a plan. You know, this reminds me of going through the evaluation process myself as I was teaching. You know, I have my objective. I have my plan, and I'll tell the evaluator that 90 to 100% of my students will master this skill. Am I going to get the five and B on my way? Nope. You're still going to want to see that plan. You're still going to see that lesson, and you're going to see that student work for yourselves. According to Knox Board Policy B112, "It is your duty to vote and act impartially for the good of the Knox County school system. Please take this responsibility seriously and do your due diligence." Thank you.
Thank you. Annabelle Henley.
Thank you, Annabelle Henley, Knox County. I want to echo Kim Kretich. My son had a marvelous experience at Vine, and I would hate to see students not have the experience of this school with such deep community roots. I was going to bring up the same concerns about white saviorism as Board Member Watson, and I appreciate the answers that were given. It still feels a little like an expanding empire, to his point, Starbucks. And kids are not coffee. For me, it's not about whether or not Knox Prep can do a great job of educating boys. Clearly, Chattanooga has proved that they can. It all sounds wonderful, and the representatives who spoke tonight are very compelling. I have no argument there. This would all be great if they weren't doing it with Knox County schools' money. What happens to those who are left out? What happens to the boys who aren't able to get in, the ones who are left behind? What happens to the girls when money's taken from their schools? My understanding is that a local predominantly black church was going to host this school, and they've pulled out. And the gentleman who was going to lead the school has also stepped away, and the local office of the NAACP has said, "Please withdraw your application." One of our state representatives has also expressed his concerns with regard to the school. The community that they say they want to help does not seem to want them here. They talk about wanting to raise future presidents. The community is worried about all the kids who aren't going to be presidents, the ones who will suffer because money was siphoned away from their schools to educate the future presidents. I would love to see something in Knox County like Knox Prep. I wish the Owlings would form a foundation and provide these supports for all of our students who meet their demographic. Take all the money that you're pouring into advertising and PR and put it into Vine, Sarah Moore Green. Help all the kids. Don't take money out of our community schools to help the few. Or take your money, open a free private school here. Fund it privately, not with our county dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. Keith Britt. Say your name, county residence, and you have three minutes.
Hi, Keith Britt, 506 Nolte Drive. What Ms. Kek has sending, handing out right now are just copies of the documents I'll be referencing. Mr. Triplett, you're absolutely correct. Knox Prep is an inevitability. No matter who approves it, it's coming, it's coming here. What I think is failed to be considered here is who's going to pay for the Title IX lawsuits that's going to follow, follow that. I, I'm sure you're familiar with the dozens of Title VII lawsuits that this county has failed to demonstrate that they have standing on, and we keep losing and losing. We're going to tack Title IX on top of that with Knox Prep. One, because the judge is going to look at your own policy that you'll be violating, which states, "All students shall have the same opportunities with regards to programs and activities, regardless of race, color, creed, religion, national origin, sex, or disabilities." Knox Prep does not provide the same opportunities to girls as it does to boys. There is no comparable girl school that girls can apply to. So a judge will look very unfavorably on you there. And that is clearly spelled out in the application on page 49. And then that third page is the Office for Civil Rights at the U.S. Department of Education's language about guidelines regarding single-sex classes. And I won't read that full text for you, but if, what they clearly say is if you offer an all-boys school, you have to offer an equivalent all-girls school, or else you were in violation of Title IX. Now, if this board, excuse me, yes, if this board approves Knox Prep by violating your own policy and becoming the overseer of the LEA, this county is now on the hook for that Title IX lawsuit that will come. And I'm pretty sure your associated county commissioners are pretty tired of that getting sucked out of their budget, things that we could use to go pay better teacher salaries. We're 100 officers shorts in the Sheriff's Department. We can't even hire custodians because we can't pay enough. So instead of that money coming out of our county budget, go ahead and let the State Commission approve this LEA because then it will not be coming out of our budget when they lose that lawsuit. It'll be coming out of the state budget. And we can, we can apply those funds to things like, I don't know, bright steps. We can apply it to expanding preschool like we just heard about, which is infinitely more valuable when we start intervention at a child's early stages of life rather than in middle school. I know this is hard for you. I know this has become a bit political, but Godspeed and thanks for your time.
Thank you. David Ling. He left. What about Barbara? I think they were together. Okay. What's that? She left too?
Yeah.
Okay. Sam Brown.
Thank you very much, Madam Vice Chair, Madam Chair, members of the school board, and particularly to my school board representative, Dr. Butler. Thank you all for the work that you do, and thank you for your time tonight. I stand before you was a little not determined on what I wanted to say or what direction I wanted to come from tonight. I must say, along with my colleague, I am very impressed with some of the information that has come from Chattanooga Prep and certainly of the talent displayed and the discipline displayed by this cadre of wonderful young men. I stand here as a testament to what Knox County schools can do. Over 20 years ago, I was just like these young men, going to Sarah Moore Green, going to Vine Middle School, going to Austin East. I too had the opportunity to take AP classes in biology, in European history, in Russian, as a matter of fact. Scored four and five on those AP exams. At Austin East, through their ACT prep in 2004, was able to score a 20 on the ACT exam. I have several examples. One of my schoolmates who matriculated through the halls of Austin East with me and the former vice chair of this governing body, Ms. Evady Satterfield, was just admitted to Harvard University in their Doctorate of Education program. We have several examples of the successes that can be realized by students that come through our public schools when they are funded by us to the best of our ability and capacity and also have persons from our community shaping and molding those students. I see this as low-hanging fruit. While some may perceive this as a solution and it will extend opportunities to some, the vast majority of the students they say they're trying to reach will not be impacted by this school. Also, one thing that I found very disheartening is their attempt to omit data from their application, knowing the law that constrains or that confines the Application Review Committee being limited in what they're able to make their decisions on. I empathize with you all. I know that the deck is stacked, and your hands are really tied. Whether we like it or not, this school is coming. And so one thing I want to say that I think is very concerning and is very telling to their culture and their ethics, how can we on the front end begin to consider and look for loopholes in a Title IX policy that was really intended to ensure equity for all of our students? Is that really the foot we want to start off on?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Madam Chair, that concludes public forum.
Thank you, Ms. Henderson. So moving on to board forum, Ms. Staggard. Dr. Butler. Is Pruna still here? There we go.
Thank you, Madam Chair and technician. I, I say with heavy heart that the school shooting in Nashville brought to my mind that two years ago, I believe it was April 12th, the death of Anthony Thompson at Austin East High School. And what comes to mind sometimes is how soon we forget. But I know a mother and a sister, a family, a school, a community that have not forgotten. And the tragedy is, around that is, is that sometime I don't think that we really looked at what we needed to do so it wouldn't have happened, so that we make sure it doesn't happen again. But we continue to be in prayer for that family and all families who have suffered violence at school where they should feel the most safe.
Ms. Owen. Mr. Watt. Ms. Henderson.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to address the incidents that happened at Harden Valley Academy last week and just kind of respond to Dr. Ryswick's remarks earlier. First of all, Dr. Ryswick, I'm grateful to hear that you understand the severity of the situation. And I also want to thank you. Dr. Ryswick was out at Harden Valley Academy with his team all Thursday afternoon and all day Friday, speaking to students, speaking to teachers. So thank you for your extraordinary leadership. We really do appreciate you, and we're grateful for you and your team. I know we're in the same boat. We've both heard from lots of community members, lots of parents who are concerned not only about the incident, but also how it was handled at the school level. So thank you for taking charge of the next steps. I'm hopeful to see significant improvements and transparencies, which will hopefully lead to changes to ensure our school's safety. So thank you for your leadership.
Ms. Spie.
Thank you. Echoing what everyone else said and remembering those things and issues and making sure to not forget them and, you know, even a week out, that we continue to remember things. And also appreciation for Mr. Ryswick and all the work that he's done, even on the back end. I know that I get text messages late at night to the whole board that he is working hard on all of this stuff. And also to Chief Perryard, who had a very lengthy conversation with me last Tuesday so that I could help some of my constituents to feel better about what Knox County Schools is doing for school security and that we are taking it very seriously. And then hop-skipping on a completely different topic. I worked for Starbucks from 2004 to 2008 and was one of the people that they sent to Cookville to open those stores and all the stores in this region in the big boom before 2008 happened. And so I definitely know that selling coffee is not the same as educating children. And I'm so glad I don't work at Starbucks anymore.
Mr. Triplett.
Yeah, a couple of things. Appreciate the students who spoke. You guys did a great job, and I hope you enjoy the rest of your spring break. And proud to stand with students. And then just want to give a shout-out, which I should have done last month, but to the Halls High School wrestling team, won two state titles this year. So we'll end on a more lighthearted and celebratory note. So thank you.
Thank you. And yes, to our Chattanooga Prep students, thank you for your patience with us. You all are very impressive. I hope you get a really good meal tonight. File, I don't know where that'll be, but I'm sure you'll find somewhere good. And just quickly, a shout-out to our South Hill High School robotics team for going, they're going to the world competition this year. So that's a pretty big step for them. So with that, we are adjourned.